It's for the work session on Monday night, February 8th. It just says the meeting was called to order at 9:00 AM. Probably just a copy and paste thing from the previous minute, so that should probably be.
Five thirty.
Five thirty or two and a half.
Yep, great.
Yep, we'll correct that.
And then there were a more substantive thing is on page eight. This was from our last regular meeting when we were talking about the hardship guidelines, so K one. It talks about the resolution setting it to 2.2 times the federal poverty guidelines, but we also made the change. There was the part where it was whether somebody's sold assets for below sort of their value in the past 60 months. And we also changed it to the past 12 months. So since we highlighted the 2.2 times, I thought we should probably mention in the minute that we also changed that from 60 months to 12 months. However, it would make sense to write that.
Yeah, very good catch.
Uh, and then I think those are, yeah, those are the two things from the minute. Thank you.
Okay, great. Paul, anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Then we have three sets of minutes, motion by Ms. Knight, second by Ms. Griffin. Ms. Jones, if you'd please call the vote to approve the three sets of minutes with those changes as noted.
Okay, Cousins.
Yes.
Hubbard on yet?
I don't see her yet.
No, not yet.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Okay. Knight?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We have no prearranged participation, so we're down to item E, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I moved.
Okay, moved by Knight. Thank you.
Oh, second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. Thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda?
Uh, sorry, I'm dawdling on my phone, so I don't see my raise hand feature just yet. I'm trying to get on my computer. Anyways, I was contacted by Zach who said he was going to be late. He's asked if we get to city offices before he's on, if I would move to table it. I think, I don't think we need to make a change to the agenda, like table until he's on the call. I don't think we need to make a change to the agenda now because we might not get there till seven. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if you thought it made sense to do something different.
So, um, just, I'd like to leave it on the agenda if it's okay. I think your approach is good. I think that at that item, K one, I don't expect to be making any decisions at that item. Other than I'm hoping that there's enough members that would like to go into closed session and talk a little bit more about details. I think under that item is a good opportunity for Justin to review the generally what's in the packet related to, you know, bonding and that kind of thing. But I wasn't anticipating that any decisions would be made there. If we want to move it back down, we can. But I think, I think the more important discussion, which I anticipate Zach will be a part of, would be towards the end of the agenda, Jamie.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, I don't think it makes sense to move it now. I, so I'll just pay attention to what time it is and we can decide then, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with the agenda as is. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Knight, second by Griffin. Ms. Jones, please call a vote to approve the agenda.
Yes. Knight?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Great.
And Wa has joined us.
And I have. I don't really know.
Okay, I see her now too. Great. Here too. Great. All right, so we'll let the record reflect. Yeah, you can call her vote if you want.
Okay.
If you heard it.
Yeah. Hubbard, I didn't hear her vote.
Yes, I'm remote from the city of Dexter.
Okay, okay. And this is that we're voting on the agenda?
Yeah.
You. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll let the record reflect that she joined in time to vote on the approval of the agenda then.
Yep.
Yeah, it sounds good. Six oh eight or whatever time that is.
Correct.
Okay, item F is under our public hearing section. And as I understand this item, I believe we're just postponing here action at this time to set a formal date for a public hearing. Is that correct, Michelle?
No.
That's.
No, I don't think.
You're being, the motion that I provided you with was to postpone it because not all the information is in due to an oversight on my part. I scheduled your public hearing, but the applicant also didn't have all of his application complete. So.
Okay, well, either way, I guess that's what I'm getting at is there's not, we're not actually conducting a public hearing tonight, correct?
You have the option of doing that or not, depending on how you want to move forward.
All right, I read it as this is incomplete, so.
That would be, that would be the preferred way. I just didn't want to mislead anyone that they couldn't talk about it if they wanted to. Does that make sense to you, Sean?
All right. Yeah, I just am trying not to do things twice, I guess, is all.
That's fine.
I mean, because.
What do you mean by that? Sean, what do you mean by twice?
Well, if they're going to submit additional information, we're probably going to have to have another one, I would think.
You're going to still have the public hearing at your March 22nd?
Yeah, so I guess my point, Paul, is if we're going to do everything on the 22nd, do we want to have a public hearing now?
Well, it, excuse me, but it's on page 15, suggested motion says following the public hearing. It's not talking about the 22nd, it's talking about the one that's posted here today on the requested vacated alley. And there's four options that we have there. Approve, approve with conditions, deny or postpone action on a requested vacation. If we do postpone, then we could postpone it to the, till the 22nd of March is what I understand that Michelle would like to do. And it states that further down for the fourth paragraph said that that there would be suggested city council postpone until the March 22nd meeting that would allow the following. Okay?
Paul, I apologize for the confusion. You have two options. You can conduct the public hearing, close it, postpone. You can choose not to conduct the public hearing today, and it would be conducted on the 22nd. I apologize for the confusion.
You mean, I can't just today have the public hearing and vote to approve or approve with conditions or deny or postpone?
Correct.
One of those.
Correct. I messed up. My apologies.
Well. Are we still in the public hearing? Or are we not in the public hearing, Sean?
Paul, I can open the public hearing if that's what everybody wants to do. I'll just open the public hearing and see if there's anybody. I'll open the public hearing at six twelve and see if there's anybody that wants to talk about the vacation rest or request, vacation request for a public alley adjacent to 3389 Broad Street. Justin, help me. Is there anybody that has their hand up using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, the yellow raise hand feature? Or if you're dialing in star nine on your cell phone?
So far, I'm not seeing anything.
I'm not seeing anything either. Okay, so, Carol, we'll let the record reflect that we waited one minute.
Okay.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at six thirteen. And then, um, I guess counsel can make a motion, but I was, I was anticipating that we were postponing this because of all the information wasn't.
I have my hand up, Sean.
Okay, Paul, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we, since filing publicly, that we vote on a resolution to approve with conditions. This request for vacating this public alley here and the five.
Paul, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you. Nothing in here recommended approval for you. His, his packets incomplete. The, the suggested motion was an explanation of what the process would normally be. Those first two paragraphs, due to my oversight, I scheduled this hearing without one, getting you guys normally do your own, and two, the applicant's package is incomplete. So based on that, I'm suggesting that you postpone the action until the 22nd, at which time you should have a complete packet, a recommendation from staff, and I believe the applicant will be present as well.
Well, I talked to the applicant today, and he was not aware of all the things that had been requested to him for this meeting.
I have to respectfully disagree.
Okay. I can only tell you what he said, okay? I can't tell you whether he was truthful or not, but I can tell you what he said. And, and, and he didn't see there's any reason that, that he could not have done, cannot do by putting these documents together that are still requested down here after our motion to prove it.
The problem is he did not understand what he needed to provide. I've followed up with him and he understands it completely. And unless the people that are adjacent have signed off, you, you, you wouldn't take action to approve. If there's not approval by all of them, I think we need to find out from city attorney if you can actually approve. And right now, one property owner is approved and another property owner is not going to sign.
Okay, then I will withdraw my motion and, and I think we ought to be, we ought to be more professional with this. We ought to have the job done so people understand. And I'm talking to the gentleman today. He did not understand until just today what he had to do. Tell you that right now, so we'll move on. I withdraw my motion.
Okay, can we get a formal motion to postpone action until the March 22nd, 2021 meeting, please?
I have to do that as well.
Motion by Cousins. Is there support?
Oh, second. Griffin?
Second by Jamie. Thank you both. Any discussion on the postponement?
And we're postponing to March 22nd, right, Sean?
Yes, postponing until March 22nd, 2021. Seeing no discussion, Ms. Jones, would you please call the vote?
Yes. Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. So we are down to item G, non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? I see a couple of hands going up. We'll take them in the order that I saw them here. Cole Miller, Justin, if you could unmute call, please.
Hey, let me get my video going. I just had a quick thing. I noticed as far as the agenda goes, the very last item, the closed session, didn't know if it mattered for purposes of approval, but the word property is missing a letter. But more substantively, I was wondering if there was the potential that action would be taken after the closed session or whether it was more anticipated to be discussion.
I guess, Cole, I think either could occur.
Okay, yeah, just, just as far as, um, popping back on to see, you know, because the meeting usually ends when the, when the closed session comes up. And then I didn't know if there was, or does it, does it usually end or does it pop back on after the?
We, we, we have to come back into open session.
Okay.
And, you know, especially given the fact that one of our council members is going to join us a little bit later. I anticipate the bulk of the discussion not occurring under K one, where it's listed as city offices. We may touch on a few things, but that discussion will continue. As you know, council is allowed to discuss, you know, purchase prices and things related to purchase in closed session, so I would think we would take up that discussion there.
To be sure, I just, just wanted to make sure that I would be back for, you know, the potential of anything coming on after that.
No problem. Yep.
Yeah, for the sake of process, what we'll do is i- if we go into closed session, we'll put anyone who's, any, any members of the public court still here in the waiting room. And then when we come back into open session, we'll reopen the meeting and bring all those people who are in the waiting room back into the meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Cole. Cole, just for the record, what was your address?
Right, 7654 Forest Street.
Thank you. Next up this evening is Mr. McCarter.
Thanks, Mayor Keo. Appreciate it. Could, I'm not on gallery view. Mr. Mayor, would you be willing to raise your hand if you hear me? Okay. Great, thank you. I'm coming on today to issue a plea. I am sure that most of you know that our county is severely COVID vaccine limited right now. Supply of COVID vaccine is very limited. A lot of that is outside of our control because the SBI index, the vulnerability index, which CDC uses and the state passes through for the allocation of vaccine, discredits our county and the needs of a lot of people in the county because we have such high income, high education, high healthcare access in other parts of the county. As a consequence of that, right now, the access to vaccine is, I've heard various comparisons, either Hunger Games or the first class passengers chaotically filling the lifeboats of the Titanic. I'm sure that each of you knows stories of people who have been seeking vaccinations in whatever way they can within the county and outside the county. So the plea, the ask, I'll make it a plea. I am, I'm asking the council to actively advocate in the COVID arena to our county and state politicians in a few specific areas that are very critical. And where I think if there is a ground swell across the county, it can serve the health and if not the life of the population in the county. The first advocacy is fill the pipeline, get vaccines into the pipeline, supplement the SBI because we have been undersupplied with vaccine. And I think that our representatives in the area, like Senator Irwin, for example, is very aware of that situation and what could be done to change it through the state public health folks. The second thing I'm going to plead for is in, in the process, advocate for equity. We spoke about this briefly last time. I put out an ask that, Mr. Mayor, you and hopefully a minimum of one, one other person from the council would reach out across the US 23 boundary, speak with Mayor Lois Richardson, arrange some specific Zoom to Zoom contact to talk about the, what the residents are experiencing, both what we have in common, which is a lot, and where we can help each other on the things where we are not necessarily in common. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that black residents at the moment are about 13% of the county population, yet their deaths and their hospitalization rates are twice that. Since then, I've also learned that their vaccination rates are half of their county percentage of the population. So there's, there's just a huge inequity issue going on here. And I think as responsible members of the county government structure, one of the municipalities, it's important to partner on that. It's in all of our best interests. It's really the epitome of the lifeboat exercise. And the last thing I'm going to plead for is coordination with the school board. This is something I've talked about briefly before. I think it's becoming increasingly apparent. As you know, I'm a retired teacher. And the message I am getting from the people I still know in the system is that there is a great deal of fear on the part of teachers about the return to in classroom teaching. It's an extremely difficult position because they're squeezed in the middle between parents who have every legitimate right to push for school opening and their own desire to get, to be safe in the classroom. There, there's a strong correlation between what we do as a community here and what we do as a school community. It starts with health protections like masks and how that propagates through the community and goes all the way through vaccines. Because clarifying the priority and elevating the priority of vaccination for teachers is something that we do not have in the state of Michigan right now. We don't have it in the country because we're in a position that the COVID response is very, very decentralized. So this evening, in 35 minutes, the school board is meeting. I will be making a similar statement to them in some respects because of my connection to the school community past as a teacher, as a parent of two kids and as a community member now who supports our public schools. I think it's really imperative that there be very close coordination between the school board and the city council in communicating the needs of our community through politicians and the needs of our community with our municipal partners across the county. Thank you for your time. I have no idea how long that took. That was an entirely off the cuff statement. So I appreciate it. And in just a bit, I'm going to pop over to the school board meeting, which as you know, runs simultaneously, starting at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Jim. Justin, help me. Do you see any other hands up at this time? I do not.
I also do not.
Okay. All right, we will move on to item H then. Thank you, Cole and Mr. Carter, for your comments. Item H on the agenda is communications. And in our packet this evening is the upcoming meeting list. Does anybody have any comments on the upcoming meeting list? Jamie, I think your hands up.
Yep, yeah, sorry. I'm having problems over here.
No, you're doing fine. I'm just catching up. So go ahead.
I'm switching devices and trying to get my video up. I think one thing I noticed is that the zoning ordinance review subcommittee, I don't think is listed on this meeting calendar. I don't know if it's supposed to be or not, but we're meeting again on March 1st.
Okay, great. Is that before the planning commission meeting?
Yes. I don't know if, I think last time we met at 5:30. I'm not sure if it's the, we're planning on the same time.
Okay.
Somebody will know.
Thank you for that. That's a good catch.
Okay, and the other, anything else, Jamie, Deb?
I don't believe so. No, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on the meeting calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll get into our first report this evening. Our public services superintendent, Dan, is here with us. Dan?
Good evening, everybody. I provided a two-week report. What I'd like to start with is just a couple of things that we're working on. First thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is the risk assessment. We met with Michigan Rural Water representative on Friday. There's two different templates that we can work off of for the risk assessment. One's through the EPA and the other one, actually Michigan Rural Water's helping people in Michigan with, it's called SIMS. So that meeting Friday, I'm hoping we're going to meet again this week with the Michigan Rural Water guy. He's actually going to come and try to help us put this information in. Either one of these templates, at the end of it, when we put all our assets in and we go through the process, we'll be able to give us a report that we can produce out of this and, and hand to the EPA at the end of, end of it. The other thing I'd like to talk to you about is in my wastewater reports, the second bulletin, communications with property owner on Park Ridge regarding the landscaping. And in Westridge, we have a lift station. And the one homeowner that backs up to it had done a lot of really nice landscaping this year. When we plowed snow, we went over the asphalt about a foot. And they thought the property lines had ran right next to our asphalt that, a driveway that goes into the lift station. After communicating back and forth with emails and talking to Justin, I told them that I would like to meet with them when the snow melts and try to come up with something collective between the city and the property owner to work on. So we're not on their landscaping. Actually, I went out, or we went out and found the post for the landscape, or for the, the property post. And it wasn't, the one post was a little bit farther towards their property than what they originally thought. They could only find, find one of the, one of the stakes out there. So once we found those, put some markers in there. Anyway, we're going to follow up in the spring and work together collectively to work through this. I don't think we were on their property like they had thought at the beginning. And once we found the post, it kind of set everything straight, so. DPW, obviously it's snowing every other day. They've been working real hard to keep our streets and downtowns cleared. In between that, they've been doing a lot of preventative maintenance on all the equipment. Is there any questions on my report?
Dan, what, what is your understanding of when the social district will stop?
I believe I thought it was March 1st.
Have, I guess I, and I was, I could ask this under Michelle's report too, I guess, but do, do we know, have we confirmed with the Dairy Queen when they're going to open? And I assume that means we have to have the barricades and everything out of there. Is that true?
That is true. The Dairy Queen had a delivery today to where we had to move the, some of the barricades that we had up there so they could get some supplies in there. I think Michelle and Kurt were working on that Friday, and then Michelle sent a text out Saturday to me and Kurt to make sure that we had that organized for this morning, so the Dairy Queen could get their supplies. Like, and that happened this morning.
Okay, so it's, I mean, assuming you're not taking all that stuff down on the weekend, it's likely that that's going to start coming down this week, right?
Michelle's going to have to answer that question for us, if you don't mind.
No, that's, that's fine. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Michelle has her hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
Do you want me to answer that now?
Sure.
So. Excuse me. The barricades and everything, the tent, all come down the morning of March 1st. Everything has to be down by 11 o'clock. Kurt and his crew know that, and so does the tent people. And so does Mike Holzer from Dairy Queen. In order for the district to operate through February 28th, which is the last day, you can't get everybody in at 11 o'clock at night to take down the tent or remove the barricades. So they'll be done first thing in the morning on March 1st. It's very carefully orchestrated.
So I talked to Kurt about this a little bit this morning, council. Once I get the tent out of there, I'm guessing unless this warm weather keeps up, we're going to probably have some snow that we need to move out of there. So once the tent is gone and out of the way, we're going to have to leave them barricades up so we can do, if we have to, try to, to get as much snow hold out of there, to push somewhere to get everything cleared out.
Yeah, Dan, that's why I was asking the question about, would it start this week? Because it seems like, it seems like if it, if it ended a couple of days early, it isn't really a big deal.
I would think, I would think so.
I mean, rather than you guys having to do a whole bunch on Monday morning.
Yep.
Anyway, okay, just asking. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Dan.
Oh, no, I just wanted to know if anybody had any questions on my written report.
I'm not seeing, Paul, no, you're not waving a pencil. Julie, everybody's good? Oh, Jamie's got her hand up, Jamie?
Yeah, I just real quick wanted to say you, you mentioned the collective effort to produce the newsletter article on how water meters work. I just wanted to say thanks for that.
I didn't, I didn't hear the end of that. Sorry, Jamie.
I'm sorry, where it says the collective effort to work on the city newsletter for, about water meters. That's something that we talked about in the past and I just wanted to say thanks for doing that because I know, I personally have friends who are struggling with water usage issues and I hope that they'll notice it and that it will be useful to them.
I hope so, too. It's, it's kind of nice. If we had something in there, it was kind of nice to go back over that again and refine that. And that's why it was a collective effort, you know, more forward, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Last chance for questions for Dan. Okay, next up is our community development manager, Michelle. How are you?
I'm losing my voice, so Mike's going to take this. I appreciate your understanding.
Okay, welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Michelle's report is providing your packet. I have no additional updates, but does anyone have any questions?
Jamie.
Me again. I took a look at the zoning ordinance update webpage. I think it's great to have that up, so thanks for that. One thing I wondered, and I don't have any specific documents in mind, I'm still familiarizing myself with them, but I'm wondering if it would ever make sense as sort of, from like a public education standpoint, even council education standpoint, if there would be key documents that would be like a basic FAQ, how to, here's what we're doing, one-page background, two-page background. If that's something that could be, you know, it likely might already be in the packets that are up, that are posted and linked to. But I'm just wondering if it would make sense to pull out any, any parts of those packets to the top of that page with some general description. If somebody, you know, is trying to figure out what this is all about, so they don't have to dig through the agendas and packets. Again, I'll be mindful as I'm prepping for the March first meeting as I'm going through everything. If I, if I think that there's some piece of that that, that could come out and go to the top, just so when somebody's going to the webpage, there's some obvious background education info. That's just one thing I thought that might make that webpage more useful or friendly or accessible to, to members of the public. That's the only thought I had about that.
Okay, well, then thanks for the suggestion. I think we've been talking about where we're going to add educational content, either on that page or on a related page. And then we'd like to produce content that's, that goes along with the schedule of the subcommittee. That is something we're looking into.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on Michelle's report? Okay, doesn't look like it. Michelle, I hope you feel better. Your voice comes back. We'll keep going. Page twenty-nine of the packet is our sheriff's report. I don't think anybody from the sheriff's office is online tonight, right? There's nobody on the Zoom waiting, right? Okay, are there any questions from council on the county sheriff's report? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move down to our city manager report. Justin?
Sure, thanks. Just two quick items for you. The first is, since we scheduled a different closed session for tonight, I did ask the attorneys from Varnum regarding the Artemile and NPDs permit, permits, if we could reschedule them to the next meeting. And then I also got an email from the Michigan Redistricting Commission asking to come and give a short presentation at the start of one of our meetings. And so, in speaking with them, it looked like they're available on March twenty-second. So that might be a good, you know, five to ten-minute presentation at, at the start under non-arranged. Outside of those two things, I don't have any additional verbal updates for you. I don't know if anybody has any questions on what's written.
Jamie, I see your hands up.
Yep, thanks. Letter B, the eighty-one forty Main Street Phase One Environmental, can you just give a, I don't know, one minute, just summary of what that is?
Sure. So city council approved a Phase One environmental, which is basically, we, we invite a company to come and sample things like determine whether there's lead paint or asbestos, or if there's any environmental contamination to the soil. Basically, a rundown of, of the things that you would likely see if you needed to demo or, or do renovations to a building, things that you might have to mitigate.
Okay.
And, you know, those things are, are looked for and then they create a report and provide us with a report detailing the things that, that might be potential concerns.
So that's motivated specifically by some potential future action at that site?
Correct.
Okay, it's not like a routine thing. It's, it was specific, okay?
Correct. And, and we're, we're able to, we were able to get a grant through the County Brownfield Authority to do that work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions for Justin on anything? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to my report. Outside of the fact that I have a recommendation on the consent agenda for a DDA appointment. Take any questions on that, if anybody has any. Last two weeks have been, have been a lot of fun, in a lot of ways, with regard to the touring of that, that building at thirty-five fifteen. That came up at our last meeting two, two weeks ago and we were able to have two tours over the last couple of weeks and the energy from staff and I think most council members, I guess I'll say, seems to be pretty high relative to that, those visits. And I guess I wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to come look at it. Unfortunately, Donna slipped on the, on her way to her car there, right at the end of the second meeting and she's recovering from a little bit of surgery there. So that's why she's not with us tonight, but this is a real opportunity, I think, and I'm looking forward to wherever on the agenda we talk about it together. But it's, it's, I know I've listed it twice on my report because there were two visits, but I've, I've thought about it each day and really like the option that, that is in front of us. And I guess I just wanted to say that as part of my report, that I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us. So I look forward to hearing what everybody else is thinking here in a few minutes. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything that's either on my report or not on my report?
Jamie has her hand up.
Oh, Jamie, go ahead. Yep.
Thanks. Yep, I just wanted to say, thanks. It's later in the packet, but the application for your committee appointment recommendation, I found that helpful. I don't know how often it is the case that we have an old application on hand when you make the recommendations. But I, I thought it was helpful. And so I thought in the future, if there are recommendations that are made and, and there is some old paperwork that can be slipped into the packet, I thought it was helpful to give some context to that.
Yeah, you're welcome, Jamie. Sometimes I forget to ask people to update them. If, if I know we've had them, or if I've talked to the person a while, but we'll try to, we'll try to make that a regular. I appreciate the comment. And then the last thing is next, um, next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but March sixth, we are scheduled to have a goal-setting session, if everybody could still do it. So I know Zach cannot, but I'd like to keep covering a couple of topics here to keep those progressing. So if you could add it. Excuse me, Paul?
Start at what time?
Nine, if it's okay. Not, like to do nine to eleven if we can.
Okay. I'll cut my meeting short, as I've done before. Yeah, thank you for giving a half an hour.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Which date in March? I'm sorry, I missed that.
March the sixth.
I was going to say that I, I have it down as either the sixth or the thirteenth. Does the sixth work for everybody? If it doesn't, you know, we can, we can move it, but I believe the availability was the same for either the sixth or the thirteenth.
Yep, that works for me.
Okay.
Right.
Julie, wow, you okay? Okay. Any other questions for me this evening on anything? Okay. Normally, Ms. Fisher makes the motion to approve the consent agenda, but with her absent, I'm going to need to ask for some help. If somebody was, be good enough to make a motion for the consent agenda?
I will.
Ms. Knight, thank you, Julie. Motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Which includes the bills and payroll and the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-four-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and forty-four cents and the consideration of the committee appointment of Mike Penn to replace Steve Brower on the DDA board.
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Knight, second by Ms. Griffin. Ms. Jones, could you please call the vote to approve the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Griffin, excuse me, Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
I'm showing she's on.
Yes, I see that, too.
Why are you there?
I, I know she's having connectivity issues.
Well, I'll just make her temporarily absent then.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Okay, so motion carries four to zero with Wa being temporarily absent. Okay, so thank you. We passed a consent agenda. We are on to item K one. Jamie, I'll come back to you because you had brought this up at approval of the agenda. If you want, we can shift that and move it down on the agenda and, and jump into the new business items. We can push, you know, K one down to under under L six or something, if you want.
Yeah, sure, I guess I, I would be fine. And I guess I'll see if I get a second. Motion to table this.
Well, just, just to rearrange the agenda to push it down to after L six.
Right, right. You want, yeah, all the way after, yeah, L six, that's fine. You say after L six?
I'm, that's where I'm suggesting it could go.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to, yeah, move this down to after L six.
Is there support to do that?
Support from Cousins.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Is there any discussion necessary? Okay, seeing, I don't think I've seen any hands up. Okay. Okay, seeing none. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to rearrange the agenda a little bit.
Okay. Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Hubbard? Still nothing. Oh, there she is, connecting, it says.
I'm showing her on mute now.
Yeah, I see, I see two locations.
Okay, we'll just skip her for this point.
Okay, well, okay, we'll move on.
Yep.
And what they're, and Keo.
Yes. Okay, so we have moved, we have moved K one down until after L six. So we're now at the bottom part of page three of the agenda with new business item L one, consideration of Dexter Day's park use road closure permit request on page one thirty-seven of the packet. Is there a motion or do we want to have a discussion of what's here first, or where, where do we want to go, folks?
Jamie has her hand up.
I'm sorry, Jamie. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jamie.
Um, I would be fine making a, a motion to approve the permit, the park use and road closure permit for the twenty-twenty-one Dexter Days Festival.
Okay, for, for, from Friday, August thirteenth, as shown on page one thirty of the packet, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, Ms. Knight, thank you for discussion.
You're welcome.
Okay. Justin, can you take us through what's here?
Of course. So we received an application from the Dexter Days Committee for a park use road closure permit for the twenty-twenty-one Dexter Days Festival. As proposed, it would mirror past Dexter Days events. Obviously, last year, the, the permit was not approved due to COVID. But the, the permit as, as proposed this year goes back to previous years. So this, this does not incorporate the social tent as part of this permit, typically that, that permit comes separate. But all of the other items, including the booths, the games, the parade, the road closures for the car show are all included as part of this application.
So Justin, do we notice any as part of the application, I noticed that, or the, the letter there, I'm sorry, your memo there, you, you mentioned that the, the social tent is applied for separately. You know, of, of all of the activities that take place on Dexter Days weekend, that is typically the area that has the most density. And would be, and would be, that, that part of it would be my, I guess, greatest concern. I don't know what typically, I don't think we actually see the Firefighters Association application because that's a park use thing. It's not, they're not asking for the road closure typically. That's already done. So I think council should discuss whether we're you know, looking to approve, should we decide to approve, looking to approve a more, I'm going to say, reserved event? Or does everybody have the vision that the, you know, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to follow CDC guidelines, or they're going to have to follow them as best they can if, if we go forward, but I would think that there's a way to have the, the tents and the booths spaced out even more so if the social tent was not in place in the park, is I guess what I'm getting at. And I don't know what, how others think about or feel about that, but just, it just seems like, I mean, I know, I know twenty-twenty-one is a little bit different than twenty-twenty and that we're all hoping that it's going to be back to normal, but we, we still have a long way to go. And I think some, some level of caution is prudent. I'm throwing that out there for discussion. Jamie, I see your hands up.
Yep, thanks. Yeah, yeah, I would agree. Yeah, looking back at this, the application mentioned, you know, talking about the, the food also. And so, thinking about what restrictions have been in place and are currently in place, they have thinking about what restrictions have been in place and are currently in place, they have often centered around, I suppose, food or times when people aren't able to wear a mask. Um, and so I can see that being a consideration. Um, I'm, I think I'm remembering, you know, them having food trucks, I guess, in the past. I don't know if anybody from Dexter Days is on, or if Julie knows. I don't know for their planning purposes if they need to know they need to plan this far in advance for something like food trucks. Um, or if it's something, you know, you know, right now, I guess, I, yeah, I don't know what the restrictions are, even on outdoor dining. I guess they're probably density restrictions, kind of like with their social tents. It's still the, um, you know, the social distancing.
Right.
Um, so then, you know, somebody's at a food tent or a food truck, and they're grabbing something. Usually you're walking around and, and you're, and you're eating it. You're not kind of in one area. So I could see that in light of current restrictions, being something that would also need to be thought about, how, how is the food truck and consumption of food implemented? Um, and I don't know what their pre-planning needs to be for the food trucks relative to the pre, or, you know, compared to the pre-planning for some of these other things, like getting booths to commit and things like that.
Yeah, I, I'm with you on your, your thought process. Like, you know, I, like I said, I, I can see they have to line up the vendors and get sponsorships and, and such. You know, I, I could see the pre-planning level of, of that. I just, I'm, I guess, I don't, I'm trying to make sure that we're if we're, we're leaning towards allowing this to happen, and it would be great if we could get a return to, you know, more normal activities. I, I still, I still think there needs to be an air of caution in our, on it, and I don't know if we need to have some conditions. You know, or what, but, uh, I think we ought to offer some guidance there so that staff knows how to administer the, you know, the social tent when that comes in. Um, does anybody else have any thoughts on?
I, I think Paul had his hand up first.
Okay, we'll go Paul and then Wa.
Well, this is a dilemma that we, uh, uh, getting caught in, retort is really interest, which is legitimate from the community to provide activity. Um, you know, I've been in a social tent many times, and I do not know how in the world you would ever enforce six feet apart. I mean, particularly with the noise most of the time in there, you have to scream to be heard. So that's number one, and I don't know if then the Dexter Days people are saying, oh, it's okay, we'll do it without the social tent because that's a big draw. And, uh, the bands are set to play there as well. And there are some bands that draw a lot, some don't, but a lot of them do. And so how are you gonna space them six feet apart in that park area there in front of the band, or you said, well, you gotta be behind the band or the side of the band. There are some people that do that. But I, I guess mine comes to enforcement. How do you enforce it? You know, as I, as I think, maybe I'm wrong. If Dan's still there, are the sidewalks five feet sidewalks?
Yep, not wide, but long.
Well, if they're five feet, what's with, where in the park?
It's about five feet, yeah.
About five feet, yeah.
Yep.
And, uh, and, you know, in my recollection in the past, uh, the booths are very close to the sidewalk. Uh, and the, the factor, I think, smack deck up against it, so people can, there, they may move them back a little bit, I don't know. But, uh, the fact is, is that, uh, there will be people bumping into each other on a regular basis, that area. So then comes the part of, uh, masks, and who are gonna be the mask police? The Dexter Days Committee or, uh, or who? And that, that concerns me, how that's gonna be done. They'll say they'll follow CDC with the guidelines, but if you've got ten people and they're all not wearing masks and they don't want to wear a mask, I don't know how you're gonna, how to, uh, enforce that. And, uh, you know, when we had the ice sculpture, it was winter and people were maybe scattered a little bit further around, but, you know, I, I think I mentioned before that, my wife and I walked through that, and, uh, we didn't see one person in the area when we walked around did not have a mask on. Now, other people across the street that were drinking beer in that area, they didn't have their mask on, and that's legitimate. But my question is enforcement and how it's gonna be done. And, um, and how are you going to have a good Dexter Days with half of, uh, the booths there if you have to spread them out even further? I think you can if you didn't have the beer tent there, social tent, excuse me, I'm an old guy, it's called the beer tent. Um, that they, they, uh, uh, that could provide some more, but how much more? I don't know. Uh, and so there's a few questions I don't have answers to yet that I would like to have them answer to. And I understand their desire to get some answers from us as quickly as possible so they can start their planning, but I, I would like to have, uh, the staff or whoever's gonna coordinate this, uh, talk about that as well. And how that's gonna be done and who's gonna enforce it. They shouldn't be coming on our backs to do that enforcement. Um, I, I, I don't expect Justin to run around and be the, be the, uh, social police there either. So I, I got those questions and I don't know how it's, how, how it can be done even under CDC guidelines unless there are people that are willing to enforce the guidelines. And, uh, that's, that's a major concern of my, of my part. Um, and I do not think that by August that we will be there. Dr. Fauci just said we'll probably be wearing masks in twenty twenty-two today, so, or yesterday when he was on a show. So I got a feeling that we're not gonna just, uh, all of a sudden say, hey, it's all over and we can just stop using masks. Uh, so I think that's gonna be an issue that I'm gonna be concerned with. So I would not vote for this now, but I would vote for it, uh, if I could find some answers to it and in future conversations and information from them about how they plan to do, deal with it. And if they are tied to the beer tent being there and performing as it has in the past in association with Dexter Days.
Okay, Paul, we'll go to Wa next.
Thanks. I'm sorry for all my issues. I'm on my phone with still issues, so I'm doing my best, guys. Um, I, um, I have similar questions about enforcement. Um, and agree with a lot of what Paul just said. I also think that we need to maybe think about what this means for, and I know this is in the packet, um, a couple of times, but what, what considering this means for other events? And I don't know if we want to have a more general discussion before we just jump into approving something. I, I don't know if that's useful, but I just want to make sure, you know, that we realize that this isn't just one thing that we're discussing here. Um, I guess that's it.
Okay, good comment. Uh, Alts?
Thank you. Um, I understand that the applicant has to make assurances to the vendors at the event, but is it possible to make a stipulation of approval that COVID transmission is at a certain rate? I think August is a really far time, um, are really far ahead, and that would be, um, impossible to even remotely predict what it would be like then.
What was your question about the vendors, uh, I was, I didn't hear?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying that the applicant has to make assurances to the vendors, um, is included in their letter. Would be possible maybe to have a stipulation of our approval if we do decide to approve it, be that, um, the rate of like transmission within, uh, Dexter be a certain rate, just so that maybe we can, um, feel safer. I, I worry, I, I, at the Ice Fest, I drove by, um, I did mostly see people wearing masks, but there was a lot of people that many times not necessarily six feet apart, and I worry that something similar or even worse could happen at Dexter Days. And so I would feel more comfortable if we, um, maybe set a certain rate for the event to happen.
Okay, uh, Jamie, and then I'll go to Bella, and then we'll listen to the applicant.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I guess a couple of things uh, to get some clarification, I guess, from other council members on, because I wasn't part of the Ice Fest decision. I think that was before my time. But I feel like in a certain sense, we've kind of had pieces of these already approved. The Ice Fest happened, and we have the social district, um, which has a tent. And maybe people think the difference is, is that they were a smaller scale or because it's winter. Um, I'm not quite sure, but I could see someone asking what's the difference, or, you know, what is approval of Ice Fest in winter? You know, when we really don't know what was happening with the vaccine, how does that compare to, you know, whatever, having, you know, six months from now, when, you know, there's a trend and a trajectory for the vaccine? You know, and we, we have a, a tent in a social district right now, but we're saying we don't want to tend then. So I think those things I would have a hard time like balancing.
Okay.
Wait, have you ever, Ms. Jamie, have you ever been in the, uh, social tent?
At Dexter Days? No.
Okay.
It, 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 what Paul's getting at is, is the, the social tent that we have up there that's twenty by twenty or whatever size it is, you know, might have had eight or nine people in it at one time, and it's peak time asking people to separate, you know, two tables. The social district, you literally have to tap somebody on the shoulder, or I'm sorry, not the social district, the, the social tent at Dexter Days on a Friday night. You literally have to tap somebody on the shoulder to move by them most of the time to go past them. It's just crowded.
Elbow to elbow, shoulder to shoulder.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just wall to wall people or not wall to wall, but, you know, one end to the other. Uh, Bella?
Thanks.
Um, hi, I know this was kind of brushed upon, but I'm kind of worried that since it'll be summer, like, people probably will be more comfortable not wearing a mask. And like, they'll probably like have like the false, like, protection, I'd say, or like ideation that they can't get as much because more people are vaccinated. And I think, um, people wore more masks during the, um, Ice Fest, because I know I went, but, um, I thought they wore more masks because like masks provide heat to your face, you know, and it was really cold during that time. But I don't know if the warm weather will ha, make people not wear as much masks, and that will be kind of a problem if like we saw on like the Ice Fest, people aren't like six feet apart. Like, I don't know how that'd play out in the, um, Apple Days.
Okay, thanks, Bella. Uh, I'm gonna, um, ask Justin to unmute, uh, Tracy Lambert, so we can, uh, she's been, I think, listening closely to what we've had to say here with some of our questions, and maybe Tracy could come on and give us some idea of what she's thinking a little bit.
Hey there, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so I was just kind of jotting down some answers or some thoughts um, when you guys were talking about some questions you had. Maybe I'll answer some of them or help to give you kind of what we're thinking. When you talked about like the food booths or the food vendors, um, I do still anticipate having food vendors. Um, I, that's a big part of the festival. Um, we need, you know, people enjoy these vendors. Um, I think the way that it will be handled or monitored would be coming from like the health department, right? So if Smokehouse applies to have a food booth and we allow them or say, sure, yep, you're in, well, the health department has to come and check out their space, and they have to abide by all the health department rules for serving food. So obviously, they can't serve food if they aren't doing what the health department sets. Okay. So how does that mean once, so they can serve the food safely, now people are taking the food and going to eat. How do we keep them from eating around people or whatever, you know, you guys mentioned, you know, food areas? And I guess my question is, maybe we should ask like the Dairy Queen or Dexter Creamery, you know, like, how did they manage the people that came and got ice cream and left and then walked around town eating the ice cream? Does anyone know how they managed their business last summer? Because even with Aubrey's, you could order food to go and go sit in the park and eat.
Right, I think that, I think that the, the question is a good one, Tracy, and the parallel is a good one, but there's a a lot more people. I mean, they're not gonna be able to just sit in the park and eat.
Yes, I know that you think that they won't be able to sit in the park and eat, but I'm under the impression that even so, there's still gonna be many less people coming to the festival because they aren't comfortable, because they aren't, you know, ready to come out and be a part of, you know, a social environment like this. Um, I can't tell people to, you know, I can suggest, and we can go back to our, uh, booth coordinator, Tracy Hillebach, and we can talk about food zones for our booth vendors and like telling them, listen, if you're gonna serve food, they have to eat it within here, but you can only have so many people per square foot according to the health department. That's not off the table, and that's not something we can't discuss or we can't make a plan for. So again, you know, my concern is making sure that the food vendors are following the health department uh, guidelines, which obviously coexists, uh, coexists with the CDC. So as long as they're following those guidelines, then, um, I hate to say that's good enough for me, but that, that's, that's what's most important to me. Now, if we can go further and help them, you know, keep people contained in an eating area or whatnot, fine. You know, I, I don't have a problem working that angle as well. Um, going to the beer tent, um, there's a lot of talk about that, you know? I think quite possibly they can enforce those who come in or click in a certain amount of people. I know that would be, um, obviously detrimental to the income that they make there for the fundraising efforts. Um, hopefully, it isn't that big of a drawback, but again, um, they have to work with the, uh, health department and the, the beer license that they get to serve, the serve license. So I am sure there's gonna be tons of guidelines for them if they were to even get approved to get a license uh, to serve beer in a manner like that. Um, yes, typically in the past, the social tent is like where it happens. Everyone's in there, you're crammed in there. Um, you are shoulder to shoulder. I get that, but I also get that it's been a year and now almost, you know, it's been a year and we're approaching. I think people think, see things differently, and I'm not gonna say there aren't gonna be people that aren't hugging and, and overcrowding uh, each other like there was at the Ice Fest, but I also think there'll be a lot of people that either don't come or come but choose not to go in the beer tent. And, um, they're gonna be making different choices about, you know, who they're standing by or giving themselves extra space. So as the permit stands, I mean, we can't say that the beer tent is gonna apply for a booth for us or from us, but if they do apply for a booth and they can meet the guidelines that are set forth, then I, I would want to support that for them. Um, and if there's anything we can do with signage, um, they usually do all their own signs and everything, but if there's anything we can do to continue to tell and remind people, hey, you know, be safe and wear a mask, we're certainly not, not going to do that. Um, to the booth placement question, um, if any of you remember the modifications last year when we made our modification, we submitted a lengthy, uh, plan of, you know, these are the changes we would make if we were to have the festival last year. We would separate the booths even more. We would cut the amount of booths down from this many to that many. You know, those things are still on the table because if we have to remain this far apart, and that's the recommendation, um, then obviously we have to space out our booth site plan. And I don't think it's anyone's worry on, if I have a hundred booths or fifty booths on whether or not it's gonna be successful. Because me, success is if I only have fifty booths or if I only have ten booths, because you know what? Those are ten more businesses that are being patronized or supported or groups or organizations. So for me, even if it was just ten, that would be successful. Um, so the booth placements, if we can do our normal layout, we're great. If we have to modify, we submitted a half-plan modification. So, you know, we know what it needs, we know what we would need to do if we had to make those changes um, for the booth spacing. When it comes to mask enforcement, you know, I think the enforcement is on the, the, the responsibility is on the attendees, those who are coming. Um, we obviously will, you know, remind the community that, you know, take care and wear a mask when you're attending. This is what the guidelines say. Um, so we're not going to forget about those, but I'm not gonna run around and police all day long, just as well as I wouldn't expect any of the city council to do it either. I mean, we do have police officers who are always walking around, and maybe they'll yell at people, but I don't know if we necessarily need to, because I feel like our community who would be attending would be smart enough, and they would choose to wear their mask if they felt uncomfortable or if they wanted to go and be a part of it. So it's hard to, to have an answer or to say who's going to enforce it. So it's hard to, to have an answer or to say who's going to enforce it. Because I don't think that it's my responsibility to tell somebody to wear a mask. Um, and I don't, or to tell them to be like aggressively enforcing or whatnot. I can enforce positivity on it. I can remind people, we can put up signs, just like we mentioned we would do with our modified plan last year. You know, we mentioned certain, uh, stations with sanitation and we mentioned, you know, posters and just some signs saying, don't forget wearing a mask type deal. So I think that's all the enforcement I, I, I would do. Um, but I'm not a police officer and I'm, and I'm not going to take someone down for it, you know? And I, I guess I just don't know who else, you know, enforces the mask wearing in the park now, you know, so. And then back to the social tent, one of the pieces that I did write down and talked a little bit about it was um, how the social district tent you guys have, like, how is that monitored now? Um, how are, is it free to walk in or do they have to have reservations? Because I think it's for a couple of the businesses. So, you know, if you guys know how they're monitoring that, you know, or I could just call Lisa and ask her or, um, Phil at the Grotto, but I'm happy to, um, ask the question and maybe get some information to help the fire department. But again, I think they're going to be told what they can and cannot do. So regardless if, if they want to be a part of it, the social tent, and they can be a part of it, I want to support that. So those were kind of the notes I wrote down when y'all were saying your questions. So I hope I touched on all of them and if anyone has any other questions, I'll do my best.
Does anybody have a follow-up for Tracy before we, uh, continue our discussion? Okay, thanks for, thanks for tuning in, Tracy, appreciate it.
Sure thing, thanks.
So I think, I think that, um, I think I would want to see what that food plan is. I'm not comfortable with the social tent. The scale of that is just, I don't know how you, I don't know how you'd keep track of that. Uh, personally, but I think we need more information before we should approve this tonight. Personally. Jamie?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I guess I'm still new to the, sort of, the, the process for permitting. And it sounds like if, you know, last summer they had very detailed plans, I think it would make sense to take a look at what those are. I liked the idea of possible food zones. Um, I liked suggestion about sort of like the clicker counter into the social tent. I mean, I know, you know, we've gone to Ikea. And I, I think there's somebody who sits by the door and is tracking how many people are going in. I don't know if businesses like that, if retail establishments still have capacity limits. But when they had capacity limits, somebody was monitoring that in some way. So do you have the person who is carting people when they come in, also taking notes? You know, then maybe there's a trade-off because maybe if somebody going into this, and I think, I remember seeing the social tent and I think it's pretty well like barricaded off with that orange construct, snow fence or whatever that is. Then is the concern that, you know, you set your number of people you want in there and then like the people never leave. You know, maybe then the people who do the tent have to decide if it's worth it to do the tent if only X number of people get in and they stay in there and they never leave. You know, I guess I, I'd be curious to see what a proposal with some sort of monitoring of the count of people going in and going out would look like. Because it seems, you know, it's something I think retail establishments have had to do or even restaurants, you know, when they're limited to 25% capacity, then they must be keeping track of that in, in some way. Um, and given that that social tent is contained, which I think it is with those fences, it seems like that's some, that there's a potential to do that. So those two things stuck out at me.
Okay, uh, I'm happy to call on Zach. Zach, welcome.
Yep, thank you.
We're on, uh, we're on L1 in case you didn't, um, didn't know and, uh, floor is yours, sir.
Yep, um, so first I want to thank Ms. Lambert, Ms. Wilkinson for, for putting this together and coming to speak with us. Um, so my background, I grew up in a town that this will be the sixty-third year of having a maple syrup festival. And I know how much it, these events mean to the community and how ridiculous, complex they can be to, um, put together. Um, especially in, in these times. What I've tried to do in my mind is separate out the social tent from the Dexter Days because that's a different entity that puts it together. And, and I don't feel comfortable putting those questions to this group. Um, what I would like to see is, even though I hope we're able to be in a closer to normal world come August, um, we have to plan and prepare as if we're not. Uh, so I would like to have the equivalent of COVID protocols, which most businesses are required to have in the state of Michigan now. So for both this applicant and for the next folks, what's, what's your plan? Uh, how your sanitation stations, who's refilling that? What happens if you've got a vendor that isn't wearing their mask? Um, those types of things. And I can tell you, it is not fun to do enforcement. I've had, um, where I work on Sunday mornings, I've nearly had to kick two people out. Well, not kick them out, but nearly had to have them escorted out with the police. Um, it is not fun and I absolutely hate it, but I think it's important for us to see what those COVID protocols would be for public events, at least in the next, uh, year or so. And that's all.
Okay. Thanks Zach.
I'm, I'm up, I don't know if I'm up again or, but I have.
Paul, go ahead, thanks for holding your pencil up. Yep, you're next.
Well, you know, I, I really feel for Tracy and the, and the group here, I mean, it sounds like it when I say things, but I really feel that there are, if some of these events that just are, uh, important for the community. But I also cannot, um, honestly, in good conscience, vote for some of these that I can't, don't have answers to. Or that I, that I think are the answers are not going to make us any safer. You know, to, to say we're going to have a food area, I think that could make some sense if there was restricted by tables. Uh, and, uh, and where the people could go, but as I remember, there's like at least three, maybe two, two or three of the food vendors are along Central Street there. And the people stand in line, we could keep them separated back, uh, for a certain distance, but then they would have to go someplace to eat. And, or drink and, uh, that, that could, you know, that, that could possibly be, uh, set off aside as well. Um, but people walking up and down the street without a mask. Uh, and how many people that are, I, I guess I have a different view of what, than, than Tracy says about how many people will be there. Uh, I think that's because you have an event and I think the Ice Festival proved that. People come. There were a lot of people came to that Ice Event that didn't live in Dexter. And they wanted to be there because there was something finally to do. And this is going to be something finally to do in, in, um, in, uh, Dexter in the summer. Uh, there are other areas in this, in this community that have these festivals. I don't know what, uh, Dexter or Chelsea's, uh, sounds and sights on Thursday nights are going to be, where they're going to have their big tent like they always have or what they're doing there. Clinton has one. There's the Fish Fry down in, in, uh, Manchester. There's a Myland Festival. Um, uh, there's, there's a Celine Festival, they, with the, they're all over the place. And I don't know how they're going to operate, but maybe we could get some pointers from them, how they're operating so that we wouldn't be the only one that's trying to come up with the answers here. But I think there's going to be a lot more people, uh, because of, uh, their, 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 uh, wanting to get out and their willingness to, to, uh, in some cases flaunt the, the mask issue. And how that's going to be a safe, safe time for anybody. But if we could come up with some other answers that I thought were legitimate there, we could do that. But I, I don't know how we would ever have a social tent. That's, I agree with Sean on that one. I don't know, anywhere in the world we can have a social tent. Um, and you got to realize that that age group is between, uh, twenty-one and, uh, thirty, forty, whatever it is, you know, the alumni that come back and there's very few older people there except me and Sean, okay? So, uh, uh, everybody else is young. And, uh, it's just, it's just, you know, I, I don't know how you control all of that. And would it be worth it for the five men to sell one, one quarter of their beer or one half their beers, Tracy already mentioned that, you know, we don't even know if they're going to apply. Um, you know, we, we, we had a discussion about the, uh, Dexter Days, the Dexter, uh, Memorial Bay parade and rotary and decided not to have it. And when I, when I thought about how we would do that, you know, we, we, you know, how many people are there? And they're, they're stacked along the sidewalks, three and four and five, six deep sometimes and clustered downtown. And then we, they said, well, who performs? And they, well, we got a band of two hundred people standing together and, you know, are they all going to be wearing masks? And then we've got people writing floats, sitting together side by side. Oh, can you tell them though, they can only have three people on a float, so they'd be six feet apart or five people on a float? We just decided that because of the health issues in this country at this time, that we were not going to expose the people of Dexter to something that was, was potentially dangerous. So we decided not to have it again this year. And, uh, you know, we, we, uh, felt bad about that because it's a, it's a Memorial Bay activity that we have and people are looking forward to it. And we took that over from the American Legion so that we could, uh, continue that, that tradition on in Dexter. Nobody was going to do that, was going to just fall apart and die. We took that on. We feel good about what we've, we've done in the past, but we made a decision not to. And I, and I, and I don't know how you're going to continue to do some of these things. I, I always, already have heard that the, and our Summer Fest and the Art Fair are not going to happen either. Now, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I've heard that they're happening because of the same issues we're talking here. Of people, large groups of people in congregated areas. And, uh, it, it's, it's not safe yet. We know that some people wear masks, some don't. And if people will make decisions based upon what they think is best for the human race and for our community and for the people from Dexter and surrounding areas. Um, I know it's sometimes painful, but I would hope that we would put that priority at a very high level rather than just have an event because we haven't had one the last year or maybe even just for two years, so. I think, you know, I feel, I, I would need some more information and, uh, we, to look at, I'm not, they're going to block it out completely. But I would certainly, I certainly have major issues now with how it's proposed there. And, and young people, you know, they, they think they're, they're bulletproof so that they won't, they won't follow any rules.
Thanks, Paul. All set?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, uh, Wa?
Thanks. Um, first of all, I just want to say this is a, a difficult, I, discussion. Um, I was raised on Dexter Days. I sat in a booth with my dad and my Papa selling woodworking items in the eighties at Dexter Days. I, I love it. Um, but I agree with some of what Paul was just saying, especially if some of these other events are canceled, it's, it's just tough for me to think that if, you know, if there's nothing else going on, to think that it's not going to be the Ice Fest on steroids, which I, I wish that we could just say that that was okay. I just, I don't know, it's just, it's difficult and there's a lot to consider. And I would also like to look at, just, maybe just consult with other communities and see what they're thinking and feeling about things before we make any decisions.
Okay. Um, Julie? Who's on mute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I got shut down there for a little bit, so I lost part of the conversation, especially what Tracy was talking. I apologize for that. So, um, I guess the question I want to ask the Dexter Days committee is what is your drop, your drop dead date that you would have to know? Whether we get approval or not, so you could start organizing and planning? That's the first question I have. Secondly, I do want to comment about masking. From what I have seen, most people are very aware of masking. Almost everybody I see everywhere wears a mask. I don't think masking is a problem. The distancing, yes, is a problem. Masking, I don't see to be a problem. I think most people are so mindful of it that they're wearing them all the time. I'm not sure about that younger generation, I have to admit. Um, and I would have serious questions about the social tent because there's never any less than two hundred people in the evening in those tents, so. Um, but yeah, I guess my first question is, what is their last, their drop dead date that they would need to know if they get approval or not? Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Is, um, Tracy's still on, maybe we can see if she can answer that first question of yours.
Yes, I'm here. Um, I think in order to, first of all, I already feel like we're behind the eight ball because that's just life, I think. Um, I would prefer that our, moving forward, our permit is approved in January. Actually, if I had it my way, I would have it approved in December, so starting January would be good to go, but I don't know how that works with you guys. So now that we are in February, honestly, like, I would need to know by March. April, May, June, July, that's like three months before the festival. We need a lot of sponsors, we need a lot of booths, we need to pay for a lot of things. And eight weeks, ten, twelve weeks is kind, twelve, is cutting it, so it would have to be March. So my, my, my thought is, is y'all have a lot of questions and I, I, I want to make sure that when we are submitting more details, that we are answering them. Have you guys ever, um, maybe thought of compiling a list and responding back to us? Perhaps to Julie who submitted it and say, these are the questions, we need some more information and clarity on this, these things here. Um, in addition to anything else you want to provide to us, because I can shoot from the hip, but I don't want to miss. So if you guys have specific questions, I don't want to forget them. Um, so let us know, like, compile your list when you get off this meeting, maybe next week or this week, you guys can put together. These are things we need to know, um, to help us determine. Um, someone said they wanted to check with other communities. I mean, I guess feel free to call. I don't know if I have any phone numbers or contacts for you. I talked to Milford Memories a lot last year. I talked to the Fowlerville Fair a lot last year and I talked to the Chelsea Fair a lot last year. So, I mean, those would be the, the three I would suggest perhaps reaching out to. Um, but again, you'd have to call the city for Fowlerville and then the Chelsea Fair is independent. They don't need permits and same with the Fowlerville Fair. So, um, I don't know if that helps.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Okay, so right now we had a motion by Griffin with a second by Julie to approve as noted or approve as submitted. Does council want to continue on with that or do we want to request additional information? Do we want to postpone? Do we want, what, what? Anybody having a feeling one way or the other? I feel like we need at least a plan for the food area and need to understand. You know, Zach made some good question, had some good questions about the COVID protocols, sanitation stations. Um, you know, what happens if a vendor's not wearing a mask, which goes back to Paul's original question of enforcement? I think we need to hear what those plans are before, um, listen, before, before I want to vote for it, let me say it that way. Jamie, I see your hands up?
Yep, thanks. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate, uh, the conversation and all the information from Tracy. I don't, um, I, I'd be fine amending my motion to, um, postpone until our next meeting. You know, I guess that would be as soon as possible would be our next meeting, which, uh, whatever that would be, um, eighth, I'm guessing. And I don't know, I mean, we approved Ice Fest and I think that was fine. I, I can envision, um, you know, approving this in some form. So maybe it's not, you know, if people aren't comfortable improving all the components or, you know, to, you know, the full extent, you know, that's outlined here. I don't know if what comes back to us is, here's plan, here's plan A and, and plan A is, because I don't know, you know, Tracy mentioned, you know, ten, having ten businesses there is a success for them. That's helpful information. Look, what, what is the most restricted version of this Dexter Days that they could envision? That would be meaningful to them, that would be worth their time of putting this all together. That would be meaningful to them, that would be worth their time of putting this all together. That would positively, positively benefit the community, whether it's these 10 vendors who are getting, um, the publicity. You know, because hearing that there are, you know, I think there are people on, you know, variety, it's a continuum of where people are comfortable. So is there, you know, when, when we come back to meet, something that is the most restricted version of, you know, we've got this area, you know, there's no food or, you know, the food could look like we have this food area. Or maybe it's even three things, where it's no food or there's food just in these areas with these protocols. And then there's, you know, what they currently have, which is saying, you know, like, like it usually is. And then same thing with vendors. Vendors is, you know, the minimum number that is meaningful is 10 or whatever. And in this space, they're all 20 feet apart. You know what I mean? Like, is there, I think it could be helpful to see at least two options when we come back to look at this. Because I don't, I, you, when we talked at the Parks and Rec meeting, one of the last times, the Easter egg scramble came up and not to get, not to get off topic, but just to say that I think the first instinct was to say, well, we can't, we can't do that. We can't do it like we've always done it. Okay, but can we re-envision it? Can we reimagine it? So I am more than willing to reimagine Dexter days in a way that takes some or all of the components in their original form or a modified form or something, as long as it's meaningful to the Dexter Days Committee, Committee to be putting in the time and effort. And so for us to then, to see the next time, I guess I'm thinking because people are on this continuum, maybe two versions. One is the most restricted, that's at least meaningful to them to do, worth their time, and one that maybe has some more leeway in it. Thank you.
Jamie, I think that's a good suggestion, but we don't, we don't have that vision now, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, Zach?
So what I've heard is kind of with the bigger brush, the things that we want to see is the, the variations with the potential layout, how food and food areas would be handled and COVID protocols. If I've missed any out, someone shout, but I have a question for Ms. Lambert. If she would be able to provide that information for our next meeting on March 8th? And follow up from Mr. Briers, when would she need to get that information into you? Or pre-question, I guess.
For the pack, it would go out on the 3rd of March.
And today is the 22nd of February, correct?
Correct. So if she could turn it in by the 1st, that would be helpful.
That's a week away for her. I don't know if that's doable or not, but you can ask her, she's here.
You can unmute Tracy, Justin, to answer that question.
Um, so I think we can look at our last year's modified plan to answer a lot of your questions. My thought as we're talking and discussing this, um, because I'm hearing many of you guys want to want to support this, right? You know, and obviously so do we. So I think this might be a great opportunity for Dexter Days and like a city rep to maybe work together to work on an agreeable plan. Your team knows what you want and what your bottom line is to be satisfied. And then our team, you know, knows what we want and what our bottom line would be to be satisfied. So maybe, uh, given this time of, you know, a, what, what we're dealing with nowadays, maybe, maybe this is, maybe this is when one of your representatives has to come to the table and negotiate with us. And I don't mean negotiate like terribly, but I mean like work together on this plan so that we're answering your questions. Because I can submit two, three plans, but like, is it valuable on my time to do that if I'm, if I'm missing all the book, the, the needs that you guys want?
I think that, thanks Tracy. I think that, um, if there's something that we, I think we should put together a list of the concerns that have been discussed tonight and get those over to you. But I mean, largely, I, I, you know, other than, but like, like I, I don't see the social tent. I was trying to offer the social tent area as a sacrificial lamb for space out. Okay, okay, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be blunt and just say, you know, I'm, I'm not going to vote for a plan that has that in it. I think that's just, I, I think that would be just irresponsible of us.
Well, it's nice to know where you stand on that, you know? So if that's the consensus for everyone, then, you know, if, if things have to be changed, like I'm not going to write a plan up to include it. If, like, hands down, you guys are all going to say no, you know, so.
I don't, yeah, and Tracy, I don't, you know, I think what we're dealing with here today is, is a, you asked it to be on the agenda and we've got a motion, so we're discussing it. I don't know that we're taking a consensus on each individual item that way. I think you have to, as the applicant, you have to do a little bit of soul searching too and take the, take the input as it may. But I, I, I'm, you know, I think the answer here is if, if you can get back to us, I think, I think Jamie's got a very good idea, which is, you know, show us what you can, what's the, the most restrictive thing you can live with. That gives us an ability to judge whether we think it's, you know, safer, fits our vision for that. You know, we, there's been some talk about the ICE Fest. You know, it's, it's funny, the, the, um, when I, I honestly thought that the cold weather and, and what I saw a year ago would not lead to a high turnout this year. Because a year ago, it, it was cold and in a lot of, even on the first day, it was even a little bit drizzly. It was a yucky day and there weren't that many people. But Mother Nature threw a curveball and, and created a fantastic winter day. And, and that created the opportunity for everybody who wanted to be outside to get outside and more. And I'll tell you, I was, I was there watching and monitoring. I said this a few weeks ago and Paul asked me my thoughts on it. And, and it made me uncomfortable. It made me partially uncomfortable. Now, I was doing a good job of standing by myself, but, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm sure that people thought, you know, what, what are we doing? And I, I guess, you know, just out of respect for that, I, I'm, I'm, I'm open minded enough, I'd like to look at another, another plan. But I, I don't, I don't, I'm not prepared to take action tonight. Personally.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make other kind of, Tracy maybe, uh, have some wishful thinking there that this council can have send one person to come up all the answers there. Because we don't agree on it, a lot of things here tonight. I think you saw the seven of us talking and, or six of us talking and we all have different opinions there. So, uh, I, I don't know how that person would represent the council and their view unless they have the side that they want to project.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to give all of our comments to her. If there's, if there's other thoughts after the meeting, we have to get them to Justin to get them to her. But, um, Julie, your hands up, please.
I'm sorry?
Hi, no, this Julie, um, thank you. Just, just real, yeah, there's two Julies. Just real quick, you guys had asked about other fairs, so I did a quick search. Chelsea Sites and Sounds is on this year. They are taking, um, they've got information on their website. They're starting in mid-July and the Fowlerville Fair is going to be up and running in, um, also, I think, I think that one was in August. I looked at Milford and when I did just the search, it says that they are having their event, but they have not updated their website. So I'm not positive on that, but I just wanted to let you guys know that Chelsea and Fowlerville are having their events this year.
Thank you for that information. Okay, so Jamie, did you, um, say you were willing to offer a motion to postpone?
Yeah, yeah, a motion to postpone until March 8.
Okay, till the first meeting in March?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second, Michelle's.
Thanks, Zach. Any discussion on a postponement? Ms. Jones, would you please call the vote to, uh, approve the postponing of this from today until March 8?
Yes. Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes, thank you. Okay, motion carries, so we will have that back on our agenda at our next meeting, uh, with additional information from, from the committee. New business item L2 is consideration of the Water Move Park use road closure permit request. Not sure if anybody has their hand up or not, I don't see any hands.
I'll, I'll make the motion just to get it started, okay?
Okay. What motion would you like to make?
Uh, that they are allowed to do, uh, for, uh, the, uh, excuse me, the, uh, August 14th, 111 mile bike race that would start and finish in a dumpster park near Jolly Pumpkin.
Okay, motion by Cousins?
I'll second.
Second, Michelle's.
I didn't see who it was first. Okay, if I go, Zach?
Yep.
I heard that, okay. Motion Cousins, second Zach? To approve? Okay, council discussion?
Well, since I made the motion, I, you know, this, this starts in Dexter, it ends in Dexter at a, at a business. And, uh, they'll hope to have like 250 to 500 participants. As I understand, the most bike races are strung out a long ways. So I felt that, that they started, and I don't know if they'll have, you know, different start, start times or not, but that could be a consideration to keep people spread apart a little bit further. But, uh, that's one of the things that, uh, that I think that could be monitored and controlled by having different. There's not four people ride on a bike or six people ride on a bike. There's one person rides on a bike and so they want to get it done. You know, they could come back, but I guess the question that, that everybody would probably want to ask is, you know, what do you have when you come back to the space? Or at the beginning of the space, you know, are you still going to be six feet apart? Should you wear a mask until you get on the bike and start to ride? I think those all have to be at least answered there. It's going to be on the 14th of August, which also is during Dexter Day, so.
Okay.
Sean?
Jamie?
Justin.
Justin, go, Justin, did you say something?
Yeah, just, just real quick, um, I, I did send this over to, uh, the sheriff's office and DAFD. And, um, uh, end of last week, DAFD did provide comment back, um, with, uh, questions about, potential layouts for like, um, water tents and parking. Um, and it's my understanding that, that last year, uh, parking was a, was a little bit of an issue. Or not, not last year, the, the year before. I think last year they, um, staggered the, the start times. Um, and there was also an issue with access to Dex Tech, um, and their trucks constantly moving. So those are all, all questions that have been, um, sent to the applicant, uh, to answer, but we have not received an answer back yet.
Okay. Jamie?
Thanks, uh, so quick clarification first and then I can say a couple of things. So just, this happened last year in 2020?
Uh, it, it, it did, um, not as it's proposed here. I believe they, they did either stagger start times or, um, did it over a period of, uh, one to two days. So it, it was more spread out and, and they did, uh, have a significantly reduced number of, um, participants.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think generally I'm comfortable with something like this. I've not participated in a bike race, but I've participated in plenty of, uh, running races. And so, I mean, there can, there's potential for congregation, you know, people at the start line or people waiting to be supportive potty before they go. So I don't know what the, you know, kind of plan is around that. It seems like staggered start times where people are, um, yeah, separated a bit because they're not all starting at the same time, could be beneficial for that. And yeah, it sounds like those other concerns are obviously significant and would need to be answered firsthand. So yeah, so I don't, I guess they don't know what that means in terms of our ability to approve. If we don't have a final answer on those other questions, maybe then we wait.
Yeah, seems like another one that probably should be postponed. Zach?
Uh, yep. So this one, I, well, I'll start with the easy question. Wouldn't they also need to have, um, closures on, at the traffic circles? When they're coming after and how we down to shield? Um, I guess that'd be something to throw out to them. I do look at this a little bit differently than the, um, permit for Dexter days because this is for road closure, not for an event. If they were starting and stopping the event in the park, I'd, I'd look more closely at how they're going to manage people. Because that portion is on private property, I'm just more concerned about the, the traffic issue with, with this one. But it does sound 250 to 500 participants, that's a lot of Subarus to be parked down there. So it probably would be best for us to, um, wait to get an answer of, from that perspective as well.
Paul, Julie, Wa, anybody got additional comments?
I'll make a motion that we postpone the decision and that we ask for more information. I don't know if we can do it, they can do it by March the 8th, but, uh, what's the next meeting after that?
Twenty second.
What, what's that?
The twenty second?
Yeah, twenty second of, of March. They ought to be able to still have their event, even with a month delay to get the answers here for us, so.
I, um, they, based on, on, uh, their response email to the fire department's request, it did sound like they were, they would be able to turn around information fairly quickly.
Okay, well, then I'll, then I will make it the 8th then.
Okay, so motion by Paul to postpone this to March 8th to allow the applicant to address the questions that have been raised? Is there a second? Zach, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, it's still up, but sure, I'll second it.
That's okay, thanks. I, I was convenient to call on you, pal, I needed you. Okay, so motion by Cousins, second by Michelle's to postpone? Any other discussion from council on this or questions? And of course, if you think of a question, you can always get it to Justin and he can get it to the applicant after the meeting, so. Jamie, were you raising your hand?
No, sorry, I scratched my head.
That's okay, that's okay, I'm just clicking around and saw the motion. Okay, Ms. Jones, if you would call the vote to postpone.
Okay, Knight?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Thank you, uh, motion carries, so that's postponed as well. A new business item, L3 is discussion of the Second Street Design and Dexter Crossing Roadwork. I'm going to turn this over to Justin.
Thank you. So, uh, we have two ongoing, um, street planning projects. One being, uh, Second Street. City Council approved a, um, scope of work for OHM to work on, on, uh, a more comprehensive plan for what Second Street might look like, um, when that street is complete. The most critical piece being, uh, the most immediate piece being, um, how the water main lays out. But how that lays out could be impacted by, um, other potential aspects of the project, including if, if there were any interest in on-street parking or, um, bike lanes, um, you know, anything that would add concrete onto or asphalt onto either side of the road. And, uh, along with, uh, the water main, uh, we're looking at a sidewalk project. And part of the discussion is how would that sidewalk lay out? The second project being Dexter Crossing. City Council seemed to have an interest in proceeding with Dexter Crossing, uh, for upcoming roadwork. For, for one of our upcoming fiscal years. So I worked with, with OHM and asked them to, to put together some, some information on, um, what a Dexter Crossing Road project might look like. So I've invited, uh, Patrick and Marcus from OHM to come to this meeting and start to lead us through, some of the questions that, that need to be answered and, um, some of the conversations that, that should be had, to, to move us to the next step in, in each of those projects. So I'll hand it over to Patrick and Marcus unless council has any questions on either of those items to this point.
Does council have any questions before we do that? Jamie?
Yeah, just one quick one. Is, would this technically be moving up the Dexter Crossing earlier than was anticipated? Or is it still keeping it where it was slated?
So, so I think, um, fiscally, the, the earliest that we So, so I think fiscally, the the earliest that we would likely want to do it is July 2022.
Okay, so there's, there was no way to move it up earlier than that?
It would be difficult. Especially with with Third and Broad taking place this coming summer. And and that project is is based on federal rent funding that we've received. So that that project is is set and we've, we're in the the final stages of of planning for that. That that's just about to go out to bed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else with their hand up. So Justin wants you to let introduce Patrick and Marcus, whoever's going to do the presentation can get, can do it, please.
Patrick, Marcus, who's who's going to take the reins?
So good evening, council. My name is Patrick Dose with OHM and Marcus McNamee is also with us tonight. I'll be handling more of the Dexter Crossing discussion, but we'll start with our Second Street item, which really, as Justin mentioned, the problem in in, maybe not the problem, but the question being asked tonight is to take a look at a few of the options that we have on Second Street and help us make a decision in in terms of which direction we go. We wanted to look at the whole corridor as part of knowledge that there's going to be improvements later on that may not necessarily occur as part of either the sidewalk or water main project. But still, we wanted to do the exercise of of looking through those options just to make sure whatever we do put in in the interim is going to be work that can remain where it's at at the present or wherever that elevation is. Just to make sure that we're considering any of the future uses. So with that, I'll kick it to Marcus. He's got a slide deck to go through. I'm little talk about some of those options.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm not sure council is at with with the slideshow here, but we'll just say that where we put the water mains is going to be dependent on what the overall plan is for the corridor. So if there's a a long-term plan to have parking or bike lanes, we need to know that. So we can plan for that for the corridor. We've done some preliminary analysis and it really looks like there's not a lot of on-street parking happening currently on that on that stretch. So that's one thing you consider. I'm flipping flipping screens here. But we look, we looked at that, we and we see that there is some parking, obviously with the apartments, businesses on the the north side. Those need to be dealt with when we do a project, but for now just talking about putting a water main on the south side of the street and the south side of the street. And so the the location that needs to be set based on what the long-term vision of that corridor is. Really what we're asking council to consider tonight is, do you, this corridor have bike lanes, on-street bike lanes? Do you consider this quarter having on-street parking? Or you just consider this quarter having just two traffic lanes? Which will dictate the offset of of the the sidewalk and the and the water main. So that's all right.
So I'll, I'll just, I'll go first and if council disagrees, you guys just tell me. I think slide number 163 is the summary of the action items that you're looking for guidance on.
163.
I can see Zach's got it. He's holding it up.
Yep, page 163 of the packet.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, so you know, I think that I'm in agreement that there's no, no bike lanes. I think that you could have a share all concept there if you wanted to have any type of identification on the on on that pavement. I don't think there needs to be a dedicated five-foot lane there on each side. Does anybody on council disagree with that?
I want to see sidewalks on both sides eventually.
Okay, yeah, okay. Let me go down that list of the the action items that, so the next one is the on-street parking lanes. I don't think we're asking to widen Second Street to have on-street parallel parking. I think that where the perpendicular parking exists by the apartments up at Hudson, I think we incorporate that somehow. That that has to be maintained.
And and that would be the intent.
Zach, comment?
Yeah, this is, this is actually a big deal for me and and having grown up in a small community that didn't have curbs and now living on a house that's on a 44-foot light lot without curbs. These curbs, they would kill how I could use my property. So why I say that is 44-foot wide lot, we got a single lane driveway. That means if anyone visits, we have to go through either a massive process of how do we sort the cars? They either park halfway around the block or some other weird things. Right now, without the curb, which Second Street doesn't have, they can just pull onto the grass. If there's a festival, people can pull onto the grass. When I drove by there on Sunday, even though there's not historical documentation of a lot of parallel parking, I saw two workers doing drywall or something that were pulled off on the curb. So I think that is an important part of character, and I've heard that from a couple of folks in the area too. Not to have curbs, to have it flat, except for it's absolutely necessary for drainage purposes, whether it's just the asphalt goes to the edge or it's a completely flat concrete for edge purposes. I think that's really important and I would not vote for something with curbs as it is now.
Okay, so so their proposal is to add curb and you're saying you don't want curb. Am I hearing that correctly?
I, yeah, that drastically changes the character of the area having the curves.
Okay, but but you're not, you're not suggesting we widen the pavement to have parking lanes?
Nope, I'm suggesting we have the road flat so that people can park off on the side as they need to for those rare occasions once or twice a month.
Okay. All right, and then is the other other counsel, Jamie, I see you have your hands up?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I hope it's not too much of a digression just to follow on what Zach is saying because I'm new to sort of the street design thing and the plan and the history behind all of this. My understanding was some of the recent road, like was curb put in on Forest by Paul? Was curb put in there or no?
No.
No. So is the general approach, like is there curb in some places downtown? Like we've done it on some streets, but not others? Or is there a consensus about that?
Especially in, as we redeveloped some of these, maybe not redeveloped right word, but repaved some of these, some of the the streets within the older portions of of the city. You know, oftentimes they're they're basically open shoulder with swales and and because that's traditionally the drainage that's been present. For instance, on the Grand Street last year, we did that project and we took that and we did add curb. Now, interestingly, on that project, we had kind of the similar observation is that there is some parking that kind of happens along the edge of the road, but not terribly frequently. So what we actually did in that particular instance was do more of a mountable curb that you might find in the subdivisions, which kind of provides a little bit of, I'll call it the best of both worlds in that, A, it keeps the road contained and helps with drainage, but it also provides an opportunity if there is a need for kind of using that shoulder space for parking that it's there. Now, if you look at, for instance, Central Street, that was basically completed, you know, now end to end between Main Street and Mass Road Bridge, that's all straight curb. So what we call F four curb, which is basically six inches high. The difference on that particular stretch is it's it's a major street and we have parking lanes on both sides of it. So that was kind of a consideration we made there. Along those lines, we're going to do the same thing on Third Street and Broad when that project is is built later this summer. That will have again, that that we call the F four, which is a six-inch-high curb and gutter that you'll find along the edges. So.
No, no additional parking along there, correct?
Correct. There will be some parking at the mill, but it's just essentially replacing what's there. And we're going to do a little bit of work around the the railroad station at the intersection of Third and Broad.
Thank you.
So so there's, so you know, again, the the council does, we don't have to add curb. We've added curb in places to control drainage where the shoulders have washed out. You know, when water runs down the hill faster, the curb tends to keep the water from washing out the edge and moving gravel around. But you know, if if the vision is not to have curb the entire lengths, we just need to tell them that. But I I think where I was going, I don't think anybody's looking to make the street a full parking with wider. I mean, we're not looking to add parallel parking, right? And everybody's vision is still a two-lane roadway. Is that correct? Okay, I'm thinking that too. Okay, I'm seeing Zach nod. I saw Jamie nod. Julie, why are you guys on board with that?
I'm good, yes. Yep.
Okay, and are we calling? Are we calling the side of the street that has sidewalk between Inverness and Hudson? Is that the west side?
Yes. South side or west side? Yes.
South side or west? Okay, your your PowerPoint calls it the west side. So I want to just make sure I'm, so your your goal is to put sidewalk the rest of the way on that side?
That's correct. As part of the first phase of the project would be the water main project and the sidewalk on that side of the street. And then the decision about curb or no curb and the sidewalk on the other side of the street could come later.
Well, except for elevation purposes. Because if we have a six-inch change in elevation, we kind of need to know that ahead of time, don't we? Otherwise, we get into weird drainage situations or or elevation or rather slopes for driveways.
That that's correct. That's why we're asking this question now. So we understand what the the master plan vision is. But we'll design this first phase to accommodate that future construction.
Sorry, I'm just clicking across, see if anybody's got their hands up or waving anything at me. Okay, I don't think we're adding lighting. Does anybody think we're adding lighting?
It did, Dan had his hand up.
Oh, he did? Sorry, Dan, jump in there, pal.
One thing that I would, I would suggest is there's going to be spots that we're going to need curb and gutter to control the stormwater. Like Hudson down both ways, and I'm sure Patrick and Marcus can help me with that. I understand not wanting the curb, but the mountable curb, it protects our roads and we get a lot more year out of, a lot more years out of our roads with that protection with that with that gutter there. Um, if you do have time when the weather gets nice and you want to walk the old part of town, you look at what we've done on Grand Street and other streets. And when you don't have that curb protecting that road, you get the, you know, the garbage trucks, you get the bigger vehicles drive off the edges. And then also stormwater damage, you know, when we, when we get a half inch or an inch of rain, it makes it a lot more difficult to control the gravel where it's going. And then it usually takes gravel off the road. So anyway, as we go through the process, I understand not wanting the curbs everywhere, but there is a place for them and they do protect our roads for the long haul. Thank you.
Okay, Dan, I think, you know, I I think that that you and OHM should recommend where the curb should be then, you know, where you think you need it the most or where where it's effective for those those reasons. I mean, we've done that before and I think that council will be open to seeing that. But I think we're confirming, you know, no decorative lighting. I personally don't think we need to do the decorative crosswalks that far outside of downtown. I don't know what others are thinking.
We don't have many places else, do we?
No.
And I agree with that.
Can you, where is an example of one currently?
All along Central Street, the ones that are colored concrete are the decorative crosswalk.
Okay.
All along Ann Arbor Road, Dexter Avenue Road from Kensington into downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help, Jamie?
Yep, thank you.
So what have I missed? I'm looking at your list. It's so there's no lighting, no decorative crosswalks. I think we'd want to know where the sidewalk could fit on the east side. But if you're thinking that the west side is where is that is where we already have part of it, I would design it on one side show the future location on the east. Because eventually we'll show this to the people out there, right? I see a couple of hands. Why? And then back to.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something briefly about the, I guess, the crosswalks. I mean, I know that we don't, I spend a lot of time walking in this area. So I know that there really aren't a lot of them near this, but I just, I've also been approached by residents on Second Street about the lack of stop sign and the speed. And I'm just wondering if we're not, you know, if we can't put in a stop sign, if considering a crosswalk may help slow down traffic. I obviously don't have any, I don't have a background in this. I don't know what does or doesn't. But I just feel like I I needed to say that since it's been brought to my attention by residents of the area.
I think that all of the, Marcus and Patrick helped me, here are all of the streets that come into Second Stop when they come into Second, right? There's a stop sign at Lake Dover.
Everywhere.
I guess. Yeah, they're saying, I mean, for, you know, the stretch of Second Street itself, like people coming in from Central, like speeding all the way down Second to what is it? Hudson where the first stop sign is?
Yep.
But we also may want to think about the the potential development of First Street Park there and what that would be. I don't know what long-term plans are extending Edison down there to that and putting sidewalks along there, but that would be fairly common area. If you have people walking into the park, he would have a walkway there across Second, across Second Street there.
I think one of the things with the, with a corridor like Second is obviously straight alignment. It's fairly wide open with some of the the parking on the sides. You know, that that is one of the, I'll call it, potential positives of going with more of a curb and gutter is that it does have a little bit of a narrowing impact where the road feels a little tighter and drivers take a little bit of cues from some, from sometimes those conditions. The other thing that we could potentially do is is looking at the intersections themselves. And as Councilman Cousins just mentioned, if there are particular crossings that we anticipate to be more heavily used than others, perhaps we we put a little more emphasis on those and you know, maybe additional signage or just making more meaningful crossings, you know, whether that's additional pavement marking. I don't think that we would necessarily advocate for speed bumps or tables or that type of thing. If if it is a concern that it requires a little more review, we can certainly do find out what the speeds are. Working with with Justin and DPW, we can actually, we have some devices that we can measure speeds and and determine if there is a speed issue and those are some things that we can, you know, they're not going to really impact necessarily where the water main or sidewalk goes, but those are things that we'll kind of have in that final design consideration. That might be something we can work with with Justin on and report back that we find.
Thank you. Zach?
Yep, I had a question for engineers about the crosswalks. My understanding is the current ones we've had these fellows to do that the red portion in the middle that's stamped with the bricks is laid as part of the asphalt and the the white bands on the side are cut and then And the white bands on the side are cut and then later poured in as concrete. Is that generally correct?
So the the process for the decorative walks is typically we'll pave the road first and then we'll come back in with with saws and basically cut out the seven foot wide area. And then use that saw cut edge in addition to a full depth form on the other side to basically form those outer paver bands and then we'll pour that middle section in with with concrete is actually will have dye and other special additives to that to give it that kind of antique finish. So it's all concrete. It's done in three stages. And, you know, we found is that it has to get done with the project itself. If we come back and try to do those later, just because the nature of controlling traffic and the fact that basically because you're doing multiple concrete pours, it takes a, you know, sometimes it takes almost two weeks to get those constructed in place. Not sure if that answered your question?
Yes, yes, it did. Because I had seen it when it was partially in the process and it looked like the center section was still asphalt there. So I actually did take courses in in street design from the urban planning, urban design perspective. And I really like to have the change in texture from the asphalt to the concrete. And that does a couple of really important things. When you're driving, you can feel and you can hear the change when you hit the little bump difference there. And so that's a cue that something happens here and I have to pay attention and someone else has it. So I would I would be comfortable with supporting crosswalks, but instead of having the fancy antique brick printed section in the middle, just having it a straight concrete band across. And hopefully that would help with some of the settling issues if it were just a wide piece there. I also think we ought to have it on every side of the street. I know when the diagrams are done and we just have it on, you know, the south side and not the north side that the process is there's only one place where people are going to cross, so it's safer for everybody. But people are still going to cross there and it's going to be more difficult either if they're in a wheelchair or their mobility stuff, they're forced to go a much longer distance or they're they're going in a place where they're not supposed to be where cars aren't necessarily expecting them. So I would be in favor of putting in crosswalks on every every leg of intersections out there. Again, it's it's a mental cue that the space there are people here as well and cars, you have to pay attention for it at all these places.
Are we are we trying to build sidewalk on both sides or just one at this time?
I think we're budgeted for one sidewalk at this point. And it was it was bundled because of the upcoming water main work and the fact that it would most likely impact the the same side of the road. The thought was to do.
Okay.
Commented of somebody who's got sidewalks the last couple of years here on Forest Street. People that live on the other side of the street just walk across the street and walk up the sidewalk or down the sidewalk. So I don't think they feel people on one side feel that they are necessarily hurt by not having a sidewalk there. They have one on the other side that they can get to by carefully crossing the road there. And I would prefer to have sidewalks all through town, at least on one side, before we think about putting it to two sides if we have to. I'm not for the west side sidewalk.
Okay, so I think the summary for Patrick and Marcus is show us where we need curb and gutter and where it will benefit us as best we can. If there's areas that don't need it, let's try to understand where that is. No dedicated on-street parking lanes. Sidewalk on one side. Some type of crosswalk feature to delineate where the crosswalks are. No lighting. That make sense?
That good feedback.
No on-street bike lanes, is that correct?
No on-street bike lanes.
Yeah, that's what we know.
I do have one other comment on lane width. This is from the National Association of City Transportation Officials. Let's see, lane widths. Let's see, historically wider travel lanes eleven to thirteen feet have been favored to create a more forgiving buffer to drivers, especially in high-speed environments where narrow lanes may feel uncomfortable or increase potential for side swipe collisions. Lane widths less than twelve feet have also historically been assumed to decrease traffic flow and capacity, a claim new research refutes. So there's there's a nice graph here that shows basically for every extra width of lane, every extra foot of lane width, vehicles naturally travel between three and five miles per hour faster. So I would prefer to have these lanes from twelve feet at least to eleven feet and quote here again, lane widths of ten feet are appropriate in urban areas and have a positive impact on a street safety without impacting traffic operations. Now, there are the couple of industrial concerns on the northish side there. So if it's a bit wider there to accommodate trucks, that's good. But I think, as was mentioned, the the tighter feel will naturally give a signal to driver driver shooting through that corridor that hey, you shouldn't be going that fast. So we don't have to worry about sitting a cop out there twenty-four hours a day.
I would say one thing, just so everybody's totally clear. The first phases project is just the water main replacement. And in order to put the water main in the correct location and to put the sidewalk on the west side in the correct location, we need to understand what the city's vision is for that corridor. This project does not include reconstructing the road. So that will come back before you before any decisions about lane widths, any of that, any of that type of thing. Will council other bite at the apple, so to speak, for that. So we just want to make sure we have the water main and the sidewalk in the correct location as part of this project. And then in the future, you will see this again.
Yep, if I may, just to follow up there. This is the first time I've seen this, so I want to make sure you get as many comments as I have now instead of later on, year, two years. So at least you have an idea of what I'm thinking. I do like not religiously following the the back of the right of way for the sidewalk. I do like to see it more straighter and less meandering in general. What I would like to see is have it back enough from the street far enough so that someone could park their car up on the grass, whether it's a completely flat curb or rolled curb in that area. That would also provide more or provide more space so that when the streets are plowed, it doesn't push snow back up into that. And I am done. Thank you.
You're welcome, Zach. Jamie?
Yes, thanks. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't think we talked about the sidewalk and the meandering and the trees. I guess I'm partial to, I guess, try, I don't know if that means we were trying to preserve trees by working the sidewalk around it. I sort of partial to that. That's it. Thanks.
Sure. Michelle?
Hi, thank you. Just a quick reminder that your newly adopted master plan does call for an examination of land uses, building types and streetscape on Second Street from Central to Hudson. And that timeframe that was adopted is the twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty timeframe, which I presume would fit in with the phase two element. Excuse me. I just didn't know if you all had remembered that.
Yeah, I'm a little unclear on what the streetscape is supposed to be on Second Street. I mean, I get the connection to First Street Park. I'm all for figuring out how to define that, but I mean, you're not turning Second Street into a mini downtown.
No, and when I use the word streetscape, it's used in a very general sense. The Planning Commission, as part of their discussion, felt it was it was, what's the best way I can explain it? Had potential to be an aesthetically nicer, more functional and welcoming neighborhood road without it necessarily being a a formalized streetscape like a road in the downtown. But they felt it was something that needed to be studied. And hence, the reason it's identified in your plan the way it is. Nobody has a predetermined idea at this point.
Okay. So I guess if I jumped the gun by going to the action items on one sixty-three, I apologize, Patrick and Marcus. If you're just looking for water main and the sidewalk, you know, I think we're open to that. I thought we were more generally planning all the other stuff so we could show a picture to the people. Because I mean, the next step will be you're going to you're going to get this to a point where you share it with the property owners, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think I think we're trying to show as best we can some type of vision. I I'm always conflicted. I don't know whose dog that is, but
the other room even.
I'm always conflicted by, you know, we have these, we have an engineering system which talks about you know, street street widths and that kind of thing. I'm never sure which which street that necessarily applies to, and I'm okay with deviating from it. But we, you know, we do need to remember this is a major street. It does have striping from Hudson to Central. It does have striping down the middle. I think we want the lanes to be wide enough that if there's a car and a bike and the bike's sharing the lane, that there's some respect there that's not going to create a problem. I don't know what number that puts on it, but I think we just have to be cognizant of that. That street generally, in my experience, I walk on it all the time, is not that busy. There's very, the the traffic volumes on Second are very, have got to be very, very low. I would guess if we measured them. That's not to say there's no traffic, but just, you know, something to keep in mind, I guess, is that I mean, we're not, we're not, I don't know what we're going to do about the speed along there. There is no stop sign from Central to Hudson. So it's sort of left up to, you know, those people to go there, they're to follow the rules, but anyway, just I guess just wanted to throw out there, you know, the I think a twelve foot, how long, how wide is the normal is the existing road, Patrick?
I think it's about twenty-two feet wide.
All right, so so right now, so right now we have eleven foot lanes. Were you guys proposed to make it wider than that?
With the curb and gutter, we have it at twelve foot.
Yeah, okay, so that that would make sense then to me. I wouldn't think you'd want to go narrower than eleven.
Yeah, I think it some of the discussion about about, you know, the need for parking off the edge and in a more I'll call it slightly more informal sense. That that's helpful to us. I think one of the things that that this dialogue tonight helped us with is you know, getting some of those ideas out there so that we go present to residents. We're being cognizant of those with our design ideas, so maybe more of a mountable curb might be more well received. That also, the benefit of that, as Dan was mentioning, by saving the pavement, the other part of it is that we can really kind of drain the right of way right to that gutter. We don't need to do swales or ditches. It keeps all that drainage in one spot, so you know, with that, that's enough for us to relative to water main and sidewalk to move forward. And as Marcus mentioned, there's going to be another time when you'll see this about, you know, what is specific of the road that goes back? And just to summarize, maybe a little preview to our next item. You know, Second Street was repaved in two thousand two thousand fourteen, and it's really still in fair condition. So there's really no need to do anything to the pavements right now. But as kind of the timeline that Michelle talked about, where maybe that's six or ten years out, that might be the time to have this, you know, more detailed discussion. But relative to what we're trying to do, go to the water main and the sidewalk, the feedback received tonight is helpful for us.
Okay, why don't you talk to us about the Dexter Crossing then, Peter?
So starting at page one sixty-five of your packet is a memorandum from us. And just for some of our council people, we included a little bit of a historical background of previous projects that the city has done, really going back again to around two thousand fourteen. Every year, the city does some form of infrastructure project related to transportation system. And sometimes that's larger projects like your Central Streets and Arbor Street, Dexter and Arbor Road, Baker Road, the roundabouts. Those are the bigger projects that leverage federal funding. But then we also do a series of local projects that are focused on basically the neighborhood streets about the city. And as part of that, working with staff, there's been an effort to try to move that focus around town. So we may work in maybe, you know, like kind of Grand Street one year, but we're gonna work out in, you know, whether it's West Ridge or you're on farms, we try to kind of move that around a little bit, just so the the funding is spread amongst the community. And you know, relative to the pavements themselves, we look a lot of times at pavements and expect that typically for asphalt roads, twenty-year service life is pretty reasonable. And when we look at the subdivisions, a lot of those were constructed in late nineties and early two thousands. So the subdivisions have been fine for the most part, but now they're starting to become part of the the needs list. And so Dexter Crossing has always kind of been one of the subdivisions on the list, but because of the fact that there was still a lot of building going on within the subdivision, we kind of would would put off some of that proposed work. While that's happened, the ratings of a few of the roads in that particular subdivision, and when I say ratings, we call them Pacer ratings, which is, if you look at table two in the packet, page one sixty-five, there's basically three groupings of of road conditions. There's poor, fair, and good. And it means what you would think. Good is effectively a new road. Not many cracks in it, really no necessary maintenance. Fair is has some cracking and cracking happens with roads. It's because it's a has a crack and it doesn't mean that it's failing. It just needs some some strategic maintenance. And then once it starts to slip into the poor, that's when those cracks become a little less manageable. And they become what we call structural where just the road loses its stability and becomes more and more expensive to fix. So in the case of Dexter Crossing, you'll note that there are a fair number of roads within the subdivision that are kind of in that that poor category. And the worst are really focused kind of in that southern central portion of the of the subdivision. And those are items that we've actually identified as segments A, B, and three. That being Bristol from Wellington to Wellington, Wellington from Bristol to Carrington, and then Kingsley Circle. So working with staff, we started looking at these roads back in two thousand seventeen, realizing that this is going to be an upcoming project. And so as part of that, we had done some preliminary, we call pavement cores, where we go through and basically do almost like a small drill bit that will go down and find out how much pavement and aggregate base is underneath. And that'll tell us basically what the structure of the pavement's like, and it helps us identify what the recommended fixes are. So our recommendation in terms of this particular subdivision is to really focus again on that Bristol Wellington and in Kingsley Circle segments, just because those particular roads are at this point beyond really any sort of rehabilitation type work. And the other part of that is that those particular roads are now in areas that are are more or less fully built out. and so we don't have to worry about the construction traffic impacts that, that had previously been concerning in those areas. So with that, I know I threw a lot of information at you. I, I can open it up to questions, or if there's any other items that you wanted some clarification on.
Justin, are you basically looking for concurrence or, you know, gentle nod of the head from council that, that this work would be programmed best for, starting July 2022?
Yes, and, you know, if, if, if those segments, specifically those included in, in the memo on page 147, appear to fall in line with, with what you were thinking, then I think the next step would be to have Patrick Marcus come back with a, with a formal scope of services for these, for the, for those segments.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Yep, thanks. I think I have a more general question. So I appreciate the background on the general lifespan of asphalt. That was a question I had, so thinking 20 years. Is it, you know, all else being equal, you know, the usage of the road stays the same, is it a constant rate of aging or failure typically? You know, each year it weights, you know, to the similar sort of wear and tear, or is it like a, suddenly you notice a big jump?
It's a, it is linear early on, but as, as you start to transition, you know, from the, the six to seven, excuse me, the six to the five to the four to the three, the decay can really kind of almost go much quicker. And so one of the, one of the strategies that we try to recommend is, is to really kind of catch the, the road before it gets into that more quick decay. And so really, if, if you were to go back to the 2014, 15, and 16 timeframe, you'll see we spent a lot of money on preventative maintenance. And what that was intended to do is really try to save some of these roads before the impacts of freestyle really set in. And so a lot of the roads that were looked at back then, we brought them up, but they've really kind of remained fairly stable. So you'll, if you'll go on those segments, you'll still find that there's, there's cracks, but they're more serviceable. There have been a few segments that have slipped further, and the reality is, is that we have these data points and we can kind of use that to make assessment about what the next fix would be. And, and I look at like a, in here on Farms, there's a few road segments that we had done some treatment on that are slipping, you know, back into that poor range. So we look at that as, as maybe that next treatment. But, you know, all the roads that were really touched with the heavy maintenance program from 2014 and 15, again, like the Edisons and Dovers, Inverness, also the industrial park, those have remained relatively stable. So, so there's, there's a good, there's a good strategy of a mixture of fixes. You can, you can do the full reconstructions at the right time, but at the same time, if, if there's an opportunity to jump back and maybe do a little more preventative maintenance, that makes sense. And, and I would point out that the city has done every year, basically a crack seal program to really try to, to maintain the existing roads that, that we have in that kind of that fair condition. So that's why you see that every year as part of the bidding projects that happen.
So is this a typical distribution then? I mean, I, I looked at this and was like, wow, we have a lot of roads, like there's a lot of red. I mean, but I guess you probably, I mean, for, to like manage your money, you're gonna, you're gonna want some green, some yellow, and some red, and you're just gonna cyclically work through it. So is this a pretty typical distribution of roads, or this is not concerning, this is expected, or?
It, it's, it's, you know, what we look at overall is, is the, the score of the system, and, you know, what happens year to year, and I, and I actually don't have the report with me today, but we could give that to Justin for future packets. As part of the Pacer rating that we do every two years, we kind of look at trends. And, and we want, we first of all, we want it stable and improving. And that's been the case, you know, since we've been doing this over the last, you know, probably 10 years or so. So that shows that, you know, the investment that's being made in the system is, is maintaining it, it's keeping up with things. You know, what happened in 14 was that there was a large, not a large, but I think the, a bond was taken out, if I remember correctly, to really advance some of these projects in the downtown area. And, and those roads all used to be all red. I mean, it was a lot of twos down in that particular area. So it took a more significant investment to bring those back up. But they've been very stable, and you see a lot of sevens and sixes, and I view five, like second streets of five, but that's been fairly stable.
And, and, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's, there's also a lot of communities that don't have a dedicated road millage like we do. There's a lot of communities that rely solely on their Act 51 monies that, that they get from the state. And they, there are consequences to that. I, I would say that we're in a lot better position than a lot of other communities because we, we have a dedicated road funding source. And, and we utilize that to, to its fullest potential.
Oh, one last question, and it's, sorry, it's kind of a tangential to this conversation. I've just been noticing, I think where it's labeled three, like Dan Holy, Dexter and Arbor Road. I don't know if it's getting potholly or what, but I guess, so it's just, I guess I have a general question. What is the city's approach to potholes or when large chunks of road are missing? Just, I just don't know.
That's a Dan question.
Okay.
When we, when we noticed areas like that, we have a cold patch substance that we can put in there in the winter. We also have a bobcat with a mill on the front of it that we go through on the, the summer months and when they're making asphalt. So temporarily, we see something, now we go through and fill it with what I call bubble gum asphalt. And then we make a list up, and then when the asphalt's being made, we go through. If they're not huge repairs, we'll do them ourselves. We did quite a few last year at the end of summer, fall. We have a hot box that we can go get three yards of asphalt, keep it warm till we get it back. We have been performing that for a good many years now. Patrick had men- mentioned the industrial park. We went in and made some significant repairs prior to the asphalt. We took out all the traffic cracks with our mill and hired a tractor truck before we ended up coming in and doing an overlay on the industrial park.
Okay, thank you everyone for the information.
Okay.
That happens in Ann Arbor, they just call it cobblestone effect.
Okay, if everybody's okay, I'd like to move on to L4. Hopefully there's enough guidance to keep that, the road projects moving.
Yes, thank you. I believe we do.
Okay. L4 is consideration of the medical marijuana recommendation from the Planning Commission, starting on page 171 of our packet.
I'll move that is noted and suggested motion one on page 177 to approve.
Okay.
2020, 21-12.
Okay, so suggested motion number one on page 177, motion by Michelle's.
One second.
Second by Griffin. Okay, any discussion required? Michelle or Mike, anything to add?
Um, nothing to add. These amendments are coming to you in light of inquiry staff have received about primary caregiver activity in the city, as well as recommendations by the city attorney in light of the Michigan Supreme Court ruling in a case Deruda versus Bryan Township this past April. The court ruled that municipality can regulate Michigan medical marijuana activities of land use, so long as the municipality doesn't prohibit or penalize cultivation and doesn't impose regulations that are unreasonable or consistent with state law. So as you may recall, the city actually removed its previous zoning ordinance provisions regarding medical marijuana activity as a home occupation in light of that same case on the Michigan Court of Appeals ruling on it. Now that the Michigan Supreme Court has overruled that decision, the provisions proposed here mirror Byron Township's ordinance set the court up. In short, these amendments would allow, oh, and just a quick definition of terms, under the Medical Marijuana Act, a primary caregiver is a person who has agreed to assist with the patient's medical use of marijuana. A patient or qualified patient is a person who's been diagnosed by a physician as having a debilitating medical condition. Again, it's defined by state law. And a registered primary caregiver may assist no more than five qualifying patients at a time, and may keep no more than 12 plants per patient. This amendment has no impact on the city's opt-out status for recreational marijuana or the city not opting in to allow medical marijuana facilities. So in short, the amendments would add, add new definitions, prohibit qualified patients from picking up medication from the caregiver's residence, and would require the caregiver to deliver marijuana to qualified patients. So such a short summary, and does anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Mike. I'm not seeing any hands up. So in the interest of understanding, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kiel?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Motion carries. New business item L5 is consideration of the extension or continuation of a social district. Starting on page 179 of our packet. And if we want, Michelle, do you want, you want to just give an intro if no one's ready to make a motion on anything, or do you want to?
Michael's gonna provide you the update, Sean.
Okay, Mike?
Sure. So as council will recall, on October 26, council adopted a resolution establishing a social district, which included provision that the operation will be seasonal and will be terminated in February 28, 2021. The, the deadline was established in part because, as discussed earlier, Dairy Queen will be reopening on March 1st and requires a parking lot to be reopened for vehicle access. On February 4th, the state allowed food and beverage service establishments to reopen indoor dining at a 25% capacity or 100 persons maximum, whichever's less. And additionally, those establishments must be closed between the hours of 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. So, in the, in considering whether, how to continue the social district, Michelle outlined some considerations in her memo. The first of which is that staff has received an email from Mr. Will Moore, an emergency medicine physician, is requesting that the city continue to operate the social district for the spring. His concern center on the fact that the pandemic is still with us and that indoor bar and restaurant services will not be able to still run the risk of not necessarily be able to increase their customer safety. And the continuation of the social district would provide customers with an outdoor alternative while providing businesses with the additional support and space for patrons that they need right now. The second consideration is the tents. As Michelle mentioned, there's not enough room in the existing parking lot to reopen the spaces and allow the tent to stay in its current location. In Dr. Mirror's email, or in the packet that Broad Street pedestrian alley was proposed, unfortunately, that space isn't wide enough for the current tent. And with construction underway at 8093 and 8099 Main, the alley will need to be closed for construction anyway. The other option is considering some sort of additional activation of the consumption area 2, which is located around fire pits were an item that were proposed for activating the space. However, oh, and, and there, there is still funding available if some sort of effort is made to establish that location as make it more attractive. However, the effort maintaining the current consumption area has been challenging, especially after snow events. Both for staff and businesses who volunteered to help with snow removal, with many of the businesses being understaffed as it is. Though, Michelle has also reached out to business owners to ask for opinions about continuing the social district. Some of the responses included a response from the Beer Grotto, saying that having more outdoor seating and parking spots would be useful for us, would allow businesses like the Pub and Diner to make use of outdoor seats. Erratic ales mentioned that they have sent approximately 75 cups sales that have been taken to the district since it opened. The majority were during Ice Fest, otherwise they make three to five to-go sales per week. They support the social district continuation, but have concerns about capacity. The other responses from Aubries, in short, they, they declined to participate going forward and aren't interested in the continuation. Michelle, I, I know some of those responses came in very recently, so perhaps that's something we can forward. But that was the summary of Michelle's memo in the packet.
Mike, Mike, when, when can, when can we consider what we did last summer where we set up barricades in the street?
That I think is something that will, for Michelle to.
May 1st.
Yes.
May 1st.
Yeah, who, who's, what, what, what's driving that date?
Basically, potential snow events. Basically, May 1st being, being the date where likely snow events drop off significantly.
That seems like a long time.
Unpredictable. Sorry, Paul.
No, that's all right. I said a long time from, from now, or from now, okay.
Yeah, that's, that seems like a long time from now to, to me, frankly.
So we, we can, we can go earlier. We just run the risk of it snowing and the EPW needing to plow and running into issues with barricades.
I, I don't know when it's gonna snow, or what is gonna end snowing, but I remember on, on May the 2nd, I was coaching girls softball, and flakes were coming down as big as half a dollars, and they were very upset that I didn't let them quit and go in to warm up, but it does snow in May. We, we ended up with about an inch of snow on the ground. I don't know if that made a difference at all, but it melted about as fast as it hit too, so.
Well, that was gonna be my other point, is if it does come down, it's not gonna be there very long.
I, I don't disagree with you. May, May has a, has a certain amount of comfort with it. April is really unpredictable. If council is comfortable, it's not something I've discussed with EPW. I'd really want to get their input. But if, if, I don't personally have a an opposition to April, it just is the unpredictability with snow events and the potential of accumulation. It's just greater than May.
My point is I just think that we should start talking about it sooner than, I mean, that's, that to me is the next progression in terms of the of the thought and making places accessible. I mean, this, the social area is fine. And it might have gotten some use on certain days here and there and whatever, but there's definitely more people that would enjoy sitting outside on any day that they have an opportunity to, I think, in front of the restaurants like we had it set up before. I know that that's not going to be, you know, there will be days where it's rainy in the spring and days where it won't get used and days where it might snow also. But generally speaking, I think that's a better. There's more people that got, like to use that, I think, than the social district, frankly.
Is council looking to have the the expanded outdoor seating in parking spaces on Main as early as April first?
Well, it's our own restriction. I mean, it's our own restriction is what you're telling me, right? I mean, we could do it right now if we wanted, right?
That's true.
Okay, I'm not advocating that we do it right now. I'm just, but I'm, you know.
Yeah, technically, yes. The reason I ask is the revised outdoor seating or outdoor service area text amendment is going to Planning Commission for public hearing a week from today. And baked into that is the ordinance that council or that we would need in order to continue to allow that expanded seating. So I would make tweaks to it based on whatever dates council's looking at starting that expanded seating.
Jamie, I see you have your hand up. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Sure thing. Yeah, so you might recall that I voted this down a while ago, whenever this first came or first came and I was on council. I guess I had the sense that, you know, generally it was what was needed. So when I did some research, it seemed like some communities were adopting this as sort of like this permanent, like cultural vision for their downtown and it's something that they were going to be having on and on and on and on. And it wasn't just, you know, addressing this COVID issue right now. And so that didn't seem consistent with what we were trying to do. To me, it seemed like what we were trying to do is to help businesses who had limited outdoor seating. And along those same veins, there were these four businesses, Erratic Ales, Aubries, Dexter Pub and the Beer Grotto. And they reached out to Michelle today to get a sense of, you know, how often each of these establishments have been able to use the social district. You know, given it was sort of an experiment to, you know, figure, is this an effective way of achieving that end? And my sense, based on some of the numbers that Mike provided on tonight's call, so for example, Erratic Ales, they were really only able to make, you know, seventy-five out of a thousand labels, primarily due to the Ice Fest. It seems like it was, you know, minimally helpful to them. They do have a pretty extensive outdoor seating area already. Aubries is in a similar situation. I think they have the most existing outdoor seating prior to that. And if they're indicating they don't want to participate in it again, Dexter Pub, the information I got today was that they maybe have the they're not successfully permitted, for whatever reason, they haven't followed through on all of the steps of getting Michelle the information she needs. And my guess is that's because they're able to meet their needs by having the tent that they have erected in the parking behind them. So to me, it comes across as that it's the Beer Grotto, I would guess, who's been able to get the most use out of the social district, given the, you know, proximity of the social district and that tent to their business. And so, you know, I don't know how this is equitable to the other businesses and, you know, it could be fine to extend the social district and leave things the way they are in the event that the other businesses might be able to take advantage of it. You know, snow removal was the concern that, you know, made us forego the parklets in the first place, you know, to trying to get things off the main street. Snow removal continues to be a problem even in the social district as it is. So it just seems like that's going to be a problem no matter what. The social district didn't really fix the problem of snow and it didn't really fix the problem of all these businesses being able to serve because it seems like really only maybe one business took great advantage of it to the extent that they want to extend it. So I guess I'm not, I don't see any reason to extend to the consumption area two to like develop that. That doesn't seem appealing to me at all. One thought I had is again, given that it seems like the Beer Grotto that's struggling for this outdoor space is and maybe it's a compromise between a parklet on Main, couldn't we do some parklet where, you know, it's just those parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to that sidewalk adjacent to the Beer Grotto. So you just take the half of it and you don't erect a tent, but you just do something where they're able to essentially extend their outdoor seating and it's just on that half of the parking lot. And I think Michelle maybe mocked something up and I don't know if it's something only that I saw in the email she sent, where maybe it looked like you could have four tops, so sixteen people for groups of four sitting in that area. So then to me, the question becomes, okay, is that something that's still as part of the social district that any of these businesses could send somebody there or serve, you know, to the to-go things there? Is it some sort of a deal you strike with the Beer Grotto because you're, you know, you're trying to be equitable if it's public parking and you know, do they pay a small amount of money and then we just let them access it? And because the other thing with the social district, it seemed like there was the serving complication of, well, if you're in the social district, you need the cup with the special label, but if you're in a regular outdoor seating, then you can have this regular cup. So I don't like, is it just easier for the businesses if the Beer Grotto just gets a little bit of extra outdoor seating and I don't know how you make that equitable or how you make that work, but you know, and I would be in favor eventually of the parklets for all businesses who are interested in having it, whether it's retail or food service, alcohol or not. You know, getting them the access as soon as it makes sense and isn't a detriment to, I guess, snow removal considerations whenever. That would be anyways, I'm throwing a lot of things out there. Yeah, so I don't, yeah, in short, is there a possibility of doing a limited parklet in the existing parking lot that's just half of it? Does it need to stay part of the social district? Is it something that's just for the Beer Grotto? How does that work for the other businesses? You know? Throwing that all out there.
So Michelle, is it your is your proposal, well, when does the current social district that we approved end?
It will be, it ends the evening of February twenty eighth. So it runs through the twenty-eighth of February. It doesn't operate starting May first, no, I'm sorry, March first. So the district goes through February twenty eighth on March first.
The entire thing is done?
Correct.
Okay, I was trying to remember, did we put those dates in the management plan because they aren't in the resolution?
Yes.
That's where I was, was in the, okay, that's okay. I didn't go back and look at it, okay.
If you would like to see a markup of the smaller consumption area one without tents but just tables that Jamie had mentioned, we can share the screen so you could see that.
Okay.
I think Mike's working on that right now.
Can you see it?
It's coming up now, yep. So you can see all the social district boundaries would be the same. But the blue line is the new area for the water well barricades so that the area is protected. It's the same length as it was with the tent, it's just not as wide. If the, if the timeframe for the social district is expanded, all of the eligible businesses, the four that we have, could continue to send people there. But like Jamie said and like Phil admitted, Beer Grotto is the beneficiary. And it's not that we've picked a winner or loser. We tried to do the best for our businesses based on the geographic layout of our city and our businesses. Excuse me. So that's what, that's what that shows there.
I don't know if Dan's able to comment. I know when you guys were earlier, way in the beginning, talking about, you know, we're taking these things down and snow removal and getting snow around. I don't know if Dan or anybody has comments about what, how that may or may not impact current or future snow removal plans. Is that help? Does it make it worse? Is it the same?
Well, it makes it a little bit better because it's not on a road, per se. It's not on Main Street. So if we tried to put the barrels or the, out on Main Street, say April first, and we had a snowstorm, it'd be significantly harder for us to maintain that area. We still have the issue of getting the snow out of the barricade area, you know, to a spot that we could get in and like Butch helped Sean that one day get that snow out of there. There's not going to be a lot of room except on either end to throw it if we did have a snow event. So it would be significantly easier to maintain being in that parking lot with snow.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where the question I'm trying to ask and I'm not doing a good job of asking it, I guess, is, you know, if, if the snow falls in the outdoor seating areas that we had, the parklets, if you want to call those, that we established under the emergency ordinance that we passed. I mean, I don't think anybody's asking the DPW to get it out of there any different than they got it out of the social area. I mean,
Correct.
The only snow that Butch removed was the snow that I threw over the barricades into a pile and he just dragged that away that was on the outside of the pile.
It's not the snow inside a parklet. It's the fact that SDPW has to plow Main Street. The force of the snow removal could move the barricades, which, which could create a safety hazard or a problem in that if those barricades move, could they damage any of the seating? Does DPW then have to go back and rearrange it? It just didn't seem like a safe or efficient thing at the time to continue doing through the winter.
Sean, if it's a significant snow like we had, it's kind of like driving down Ninety-four where they got the barricade, you know, they got the concrete blocks being on Main Street. We'd have to, you just can't keep piling it up there. We're not referring to a significant snow amount. But we still got to have somewhere to put the snow and we can't keep pushing it up against some barricades if it was out on Main Street, obviously.
Yeah, I'm with you. I hadn't heard anybody say May first for the seating is the question I wanted to understand. If that was said before, I missed that because I've been asked that question a lot. When are we returning to having outdoor seating again? I, I don't know that. I hadn't heard that date. Let's just say it that way, so.
So normally, Sean, people start putting their seating areas out in May on the sidewalk.
I know, I know, Michelle, and most of the time they bring them in long before we let them keep them out last year.
Correct, but that's why I am anticipating May first. But it's nothing that council has said. It's more of an anticipation based on previous years pattern of when people would put sidewalk furniture.
I don't know. I don't know if it'd be helpful or not, Michelle, but we keep all the records of all the participation. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It'd be really easy for us to go back at our records and look at April if that's something that you wanted. You wanted some data on how much snow we get in April. Does that help at all?
Don't bet on it anytime.
Okay, well, I'm going to assume that we haven't had a motion for the extension or against. So is there any action necessary tonight? Or do we just let this thing expire and figure out what the next step is? All right, seeing no motion, we'll move on to L six. That means that the social district is going to end on the twenty-eighth and or before or whenever it makes sense to take stuff down. Okay, new business item L six, discussion of work session dates for the conflict of interest training. Dustin, I'll turn this back to you.
Sure. So in the last little packets, I provided a potential work session date spreadsheet. I made some updates based on previous conversations that we had had at previous council meetings. But since there are some topics that require making invitations to folks for presentations, I wanted to include this as an item to get a little bit more formal feedback from council on these dates and make sure that some of these dates work so I can send those invitations out and get those dates. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts or any dates that are proposed that don't work for them. I know Zach has said in the past that Saturdays generally don't work.
Not until May.
May first?
So there's two dates thrown out there in the packet, March tenth for the conflict of interest work session and the twenty-ninth, which is the fifth Monday for the all committee meetings.
Right.
Hearing no objections, I would say a set full dates. And those that can participate can participate. Dustin?
Sounds good to me.
If I'm speaking on behalf of anybody unintentionally, let me know. I think I'm not hearing counsel. Back to that, so. Okay. We had moved K one down to after L six. So we are now on K one, which is consideration of city offices. And then we have a new business item seven that sort of goes along with that at the end of the after that discussion, but please keep in mind that council has the ability to discuss any specifics related to any property purchase in closed session. There is a closed session on the agenda. Should we choose to utilize it? But why don't we begin with letting Justin just review the information that he's put into the packet? I had asked him to put information in regarding how bonding works and how noticing of bonding works a little bit. So Dustin, I'll let you go over that a little bit and introduce the memo that you prepared and your thoughts and then we can we can take it from there.
And I don't know how much detail you want me to get into, but as Sean said, I did include, there's quite a bit of compilation that took place between the last packet and this packet. So one of the major questions that kind of came out of the last meeting and the tours that were held was number one, what is the city's financial position? And so we went into quite a bit of detail about current millages, unbalanced information, current outstanding potential bond options. We also reached out to our bond advisors to get a number of different scenarios for different levels of bonds that could potentially be sought along with the process for noticing and issuing bonds. I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of the information on any of those topics that I don't know if anybody has any, any questions on any of the information on any of those topics that, that were presented. Um, and I know there was a ton of information in here, um, and not all of it is, is necessarily easily digestible. But if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to.
Amy.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, and I followed up, um, with Justin with some questions via email and I wanted to thank him for getting back to me. I'm still working on going through that. I think the only comment that I, comment I wanted to make, um, on maybe the general process is, um, I had asked for a copy of the notice. Um, for the bonding that we did, that's mentioned there, the DPW bond, I think it comes from two thousand and six. Um, because pardon me, you know, I wasn't around here then. Um, so even if I had been, maybe I went to remembered it. So it does stay, stay in there. You know, the amount not to exceed two million eight hundred thousand dollars in one or more series for the purpose of paying all our part. Of the cost of acquiring, constructing, installing and equipping various capital improvements in or serving the village, including without limitation. The West Side Connector, Park, Mill Pond Restoration, Mill Pond Settlement Management, Public Works Facility, Public Safety and Village Offices, Replacement and Improvements. The product anyways. I was curious what the language was, um, because if the question is, do we have to repost notice or not? I wanted to make sure that we had at least made some reference to the potential use for city offices, which we did. Um, but I think still having said that, that this was made in two thousand and six, I guess I don't really know where it falls. I think my preference would be to. Renotice, um, because that's, I don't know, fifteen years ago. But anyways, I don't really know what the process is or what's typically done. That's, that's the only thing of what I've been able to digest so far that stuck out to me.
Sure. And, um, from, from our, our bond consultants, um, we, we do have the ability to, to. Basically bid those bonds, um, if, if we, if we so choose. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to. I mean, we, I, I would imagine that we could go back through. Um, the, the full noticing process even for, for, for that portion. That, that would be, that would be a council decision. And, and your level of comfort with, with. How you feel that the public might respond to, to taking one action versus another.
Or the other. Thank you.
Yeah. So, so, um, I mentioned under my comments earlier in the meeting that, um. You know, I was pretty excited about having toured that facility. Um, we've kicked around the. Different options. We've discussed many different locations and. I've said before that I think that the thirty forty-five broad option is a good one that we should be considering. But frankly, this one I think has risen to the top for me. I know it's not in downtown. And I'm going to say, I don't think that that's. The first criteria that we should be concerned with. I think that this, this property has character beyond which we could build. I think that it's got plenty of storage. I think that it's, it's uniquely located. Between our other two facilities, our wastewater treatment plant and our public works facility. It can be a resource for our wastewater treatment plant, water and sewer department employees that don't have. Their own kitchenette or break room or. That, that type, if you will. Uh, I know that there's a lot of space there. There's probably some space on the west side that is not quite perfectly defined for use. But the counter to that is that the whole, that the other two thirds of it. Is as close to being ready for use as we're probably going to find on the open market. And the cost. Per square foot. Is a lot less than we're going to pay to build. And, um. I know there's details related to how would we pay for it? You know, do we bond for a portion? Do we pay cash for a portion? I don't think, my message today to all of you would be, we don't have to figure all of that out necessarily today. I think that it's in our best interest to go into closed session. Discuss. A potential purchase agreement. With some conditions that, that give us, you know, ninety days or something. And we probably have to put a little bit of money down, but it's not probably a lot. An earnest money deposit, I guess is what it's called. To hold this and it's, it's a similar process that we used to buy the, uh, property on Dexter and Arbor Road. Uh, that would give us time to implement L seven. Which is on the agenda, which is getting our architect engaged to look at some things like. You know, elevators or counters, lobby areas, ADA compliance, whatever it might be with it. We want them to look at. But I think it's. I think this is a very, very prudent. Opportunity for us. We, we, we should take the step. To make an offer on this with the condition of ninety days due diligence, which means we can, you know. Basically change our mind if we want to ninety days down the road. But I would, I would hate to see us not engage in a discussion over this. And I think. I think this is really a wonderful opportunity. Uh, and I'll, you know, I'll leave it. I've got my thoughts on price. I've got my thoughts on other conditions. Um, of which I'll, I'll save if, if council is. Supports the idea of going into closed session to talk about that. But I really think that. We can. Start the ball rolling a little bit towards the, a very solid evaluation of a really, really good opportunity and. Justin's memo, um, talks about. You know, what staff thinks of it. Um, I think our staff is fully supportive of this and not just the ones that might use it all the time. But the other ones that saw it and that are part of the team too and. This is, this is, this is a very good, very good opportunity for us. Jamie?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I guess just for the benefit of, you know, members of the public who are listening or the media, I suppose. I, you know, would want to second a lot of things that you've said that, um, you know, for the limited amount of time that I've been part of the discussion, it seems like. You know, there've been. I don't know, competing priorities, but different things that have risen to the top for, for people when it's come to city facilities in general, whether it be having some historic. Element to it or, yeah, some immediate proximity downtown. Um, again. You know, I think like in any house hunt search, you're not going to find everything on your list. And so you're going to decide what's a reasonable trade off. I think it's a really cool building. Um, I really like that it has that historic tie to Dexter. I think that, you know, will likely resonate with a lot of people. You know, something else we've talked about and, you know, not to complete this conversation with the fire station, but just, I think it's important to. Mention that something that's come up in that conversation is, you know, talking about wants versus needs. And it seems clear to me that I think this, you know, more than meets the, the needs expressed. For city offices, like, you know, I think in a lot of great ways and in, and in some cases, I think. Even some of what's offered is something that I would maybe consider to be a want. For example, having windows in every office. Um, I think there are a lot of people who don't have those conditions and I'd be happy to be able to provide that to city staff, especially one, the. Cost is what it is relative to what we've seen. So I, I think it's an exciting opportunity for those reasons. Um, I will say that's probably an area of town that I've only, I don't even know. I've been to a handful of times and one time I was out on a run and only happened across her and really had no idea where I was. Or what was back there. Um, but I'm sure people will come to recognize it. We'll get some cute signs or something directing people. Um, I think, I think the parking is going to be a great plus. I mean, I know people have different thoughts about parking and how easy it is to park downtown or not park downtown. That's one concern I maybe had about potential at eighty-one forty is it seems really congested there anyways. And you just think about people who are coming to, you know, do business at the city offices. I, I would want to make it as easy as possible for them to come. You know, a few times I've gone, many times I've gone and had our kids with us and they're just stroller or something, you know, people with accessibility issues. So I think that's a real plus. There's the potential of the, uh, I don't know if it's the barn or, um, that anyway. So there's a lot of space. It's cool space. Like you said, it's practically moving ready. Um, one question or thing that I think is worth considering, given that it does. So exceed the original, uh, space, uh, needs assessment. Is, is there any way that we can potentially monetize some part of the building or structure or property? Is that anything people would be interested in doing? It wasn't clear to me. I mean, so I think there were like the three parts of the building. The first part seems, you know, so clearly the office space. Second part seems so clearly the council chambers. And the third part maybe, you know, less, was less clear, maybe what you could do in those spaces. Even something like, and I, and I don't know that other places do this at all. They probably just have dedicated council chambers. But it's, you know, that's a space that would be sitting vacant a lot of time. You know, not to say you want to be like doubling up and sharing uses, but I don't know, just something that I would like to think about, given if it is more than enough places or something we can do to. These for some other public purpose that is, you know, adding value to whoever that might be and adding value to the city and if it's arts, if it's. I'm not sure. Just something I wanted to throw out there to kind of think about.
Yeah, and I think it's good to think about that, Jamie. I, you know, I, I, I guess I'm going into this eyes wide open that. You know, with the, with the, with this perspective of that space, we don't always have to figure it out on day one, but I, I would be open to all those considerations. Uh, I think Zach, you were up next and then we'll do, uh.
Okay, though, um, I have, I'll start with a highly technical question for, uh, manager buyer. On the, uh, interest rate. On attachment tenant, attachment eleven are off in a man, or they're different in a manner that causes significant compounding differences. Would you be able to speak to where those different rates came from?
Identify the page, may please, Zach.
Oh, yes, page seventy-seven and page seventy-nine.
Thank you.
Um, so, so a- as to why, um, those, uh, interest rates are, are what they are. Um, I would, I would have to reach out to our bond counsel.
Okay.
Or, or bond advisor. Um, I know that the, the. General increasing of the, the interest rate over, over time, um, is unique, I believe to, to the twenty-year. On scenarios. Exactly, exactly why, you know, why is it, you know, two point three percent in twenty forty-one? Um, I know those are just generally estimates. But, but you know, why, you know, why does it increase like that in, in the manner that it does? I would, I'd have to request an opinion from, um. The bond advisor.
Oh, for, for next one. And, and it wasn't necessarily the increasing, it's one starts at one point three five zero, the other starts at. One point seven zero.
It, it, it might be the, be the amount of the bond. You know, one is for two million, one is for nine, nine point nine. And the thought is that, you know, maybe, maybe there's, there's more risk with nine point nine than, than with two.
All right. I, I will jump to my large picture. Or large view is that this is definitely worth investigating. I believe there are so many things that we don't know right now though. Um, the space is fifty-six percent bigger than what the needs assessment for city offices said, uh, excluding the outbuilding. Um, so we need to have a plan to figure out how we manage that. Um, we need to make sure that we can afford the building and not just purchasing it, but maintaining it. And I always think back to the story of my freshman high school English teacher who bought a four-door Jaguar. On a fire sale from a guy who just got divorced and wanted to spite his wife. So he bought that car super cheap. But insurance, the fancy gas and parts for a Jaguar are really expensive. And he only had it for two years and sold it because he, he couldn't maintain that. Um, so we need to make sure that we can take care of this building. There's a lot of siding to paint and keep in order. And so I'm very excited that we, item L seven is exploring portions of that. I would be supportive of placing earnest money for this, um, but I would like it to be longer term so that we can answer more of these questions. I don't fully feel comfortable about using the previous notice for bonds for this, even though we can do it. It doesn't quite feel right to me. And I guess one more technical question. I, I'd like to try to get them out of the way. I noticed in here it mentioned timeline for November, uh, bond election. We have the opportunity to put it on. An August election date too. Is that correct?
I would believe so.
All right. And I would assume many of these things we could get ahead of time before an election. So that we're ready to go the day after essentially, not all, but many.
I, I would think you don't want to have a lot of the information upfront. Before, you know, leading into the, the election.
All right. So I, I guess summary is, is I'm supportive of continuing to investigate this. There's a lot we still need to do. Um, to make sure it is going to be a good fit for us. And I support bundling this in with nine point nine million bond to do this and the fire station and get all our facilities sorted out at once. I'm doing, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't really know. Sorry, I'm feeling really like detached from this because of my tech issues tonight. So I'm trying to get over that, but it's been difficult. Um, I can't see anybody. I can't. It's just been frustrating. Um, I guess I just want to say like, I definitely support, um, continuing down the path of. Trying to make this happen for us. I think that, um, this is a space that. Uh, checks the most amount of our boxes that, you know, on any of the ones that we've looked at. I think that it's. You know, it, it, it's a space that also it has room for growth. It, it provides us with an opportunity to not just. Solve the city office and council chambers, um, issues, but you know, there's obviously room for other. Um, parts of the city to government to use it for other purposes. Um, and also there's, you know. Space for collaboration with other community groups and using the space and things like that. I guess I also, you know, also I don't, I don't know how others feel about this, but the historic aspect to me is really. Really cool and exciting and obviously hard to find in a, um, this community just because of. How built out we are and, you know, things that are being used already. So I just feel like to pass this up. Would be a shame and we would end up putting it on our list of regrets. I, I really believe that. And so I don't know what needs to happen from a technical standpoint in this meeting right now to keep this conversation going. But I would like to do that. So I guess that's what I have to say about that.
Well, I think if, if council is, is looking to keep the conversation going and talk more specifics about what a purchase agreement would be. We would need to. Go into closed session to do that. We can move the closed session up on the agenda. To do that.
It just never came down. Sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. It's okay. I just want to make sure and Paul, Paul's pencil, Paul's pencil waving.
Okay, am I next?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you.
If, if was done.
I mean, I, I guess I'm done. I mean, I would. I mean, I would like to make whatever motion needs to be made to continue this discussion. So I guess if that's to move to a closed session to discuss it. Then that's what I would like to do. So sorry that I don't know the technical aspect of how to do this very well, but. Yeah.
Well, let, I'll tell you what, so let me give every council member a chance to talk here in open session. So I'll go to Paul. And, and then see if Julie wants to say anything and then we'll come back to you and you can help us with the motion to.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cousins. Thanks, Roy.
Well, you're welcome. Um, you know, I, I got this. I certainly familiar with that, that site. Used to buy a lot of lumber there over the years. And, um, and I was, uh, I think I was invited to three different events there when they had. Uh, when Med Hub had finished that off. Uh, and, uh, saw the, uh, opportunity for, uh, some pretty good. And saw the opportunity for some pretty good parties there, okay, because that's what they were into. That's why you have a lot of kitchens there and a lot of activity that relates to that, that section. I was very happy that they saved part of the historical portion of it. So that, that felt good because I'm kind of into that with the, I care of that in Gordon Hall. But there's a few things that I would like to express. First of all, as Zach mentioned, it is considerably more. Than anything that we had talked about for that, even if we decide we could use some of the things in the future. Because I'm a little intrigued with Jamie's comment of what else we could use it for and substitute, you know, other. Businesses uses of, you know, i- in that area there, so that should be explored too. But one of the things about it is it's, it's very long and it's, it's one of the things that we have heard. And I want to make sure that we do think about this is when we. I've heard from the staff that there's not security of our records and stuff. But that would have to be a priority to me to make sure that even though we're now using it for other things that. That couldn't be broken through. So we'll have to come up with a process for that. That, that's, that's an important part for me. So even you're going to take some thought process of how that's done. The, the other thing is, is that. You know, if, if we, we can argue on one side that we have a fire hall that's too big for our needs. I think I could argue on this side that this building is too big for our needs as well. I counted fourteen offices in the front part. We'll have to have more staff hired to fill any, fill half. So we're going to have some offices that either they're going to, they'll be empty or they'll be. Filled with new staff members. I don't know what we plan for that, but we, we've. We have some budget limitations and all of those things as well. So. The front half could easily be. Used for what we wanted for a, that it doesn't answer our questions about. City council meetings, I, I realize that. I think that will have to be modified, that, that room will, we have to be modified a little bit. There are three large posts in there. There'll have to be some unique designing of so that we could have permanent seating in there for the council. And so I think that's one of the things that we are, you know, we have to think about. So. I'm willing to have a period of time to explore it. I guess the question was, when you look at the flyer that they sent out, it says for sale or lease. Was any discussion talked all about to them about what the lease arguments would be? I mean, the lease arrangements would be? Justin?
Uh, we, we did not talk to them about leasing. Based on the conversation at last, at the last council meeting, it sounded like council was, was shying a little bit away from. From potential lease or rent options.
Well, that may have had something to do with some of the types of things that they were looking at too. So we'll. I'll cast that aside as your reason, but that's. To me, you know, we, we should at least explore what that looks like and have that as a piece of information that we could deal with. The other thing about, about this. This piece of property is that we really got to realize how big it is and. Maintenance on it is going to be a whole different picture. You know, we've, we've been spoiled in the, in the bank building there. When there's a problem, we call them up and they fix it. It may take a little longer than we want for. An air conditioner or this or that, but that has worked out. But when you get a building that big. I can use the library as example. They have a full time maintenance person that. Full time maintenance person that runs the library. That's larger than this. But if you add the other building on to it, whatever that, there would be something that would have you done. And it's a building that's not made out of, of. Of a stone or brick and it has to be painted and there's a lot that goes into that. So I think I would like to know what the present. Maintenance cost would be, estimated maintenance cost would be to. Have that whether we have to have a part time or a full time person to do that, because I don't think we have enough staff. Be able to do that now in the, in the various departments, the two other departments, either water or the, or the. Kurt's department. The other, the other thing is that. We have no idea of what the energy costs are for this building. And I would definitely want all the information we can get from the present owners on that cost. That's a big building and you gotta realize it's got to heat it. In the winter time, you gotta cool it in the summertime. And if we have extra space there that we don't need, that's going to have to be, you know, figured out how it's going to be done. Back to the, the maintenance of it, that doesn't include the cleaning either. And I surely hope that we don't say. Saddle the staff there for the cleaning process, whether it's bathrooms or whether it's. Sweeping and vacuuming of that building and it has to be done on a regular basis as well. So there's some maintenance costs there that we're going to have to have that are. Much larger than our spots that we have right now. I need all those figures to make sure that I can make a wise decision on that building. And. I, I would personally not vote for it unless we have an elevator. I think that's. Throws it in the face of those who are handicapped. And that those that, you know, we said, well, sure, there, our staff is, can walk upstairs now, but you don't know who we're going to hire in the. In the future that may. Not be able to get that or may have a change in their present health issues. So I think we have to think about having an elevator there and what that cost would be. And where would be, you know, will it destroy the look of the building if you put it inside or is it going to be outside and will that? Make a difference there. The, the other thing I, that I think is that I'd be happy to look at. Any other usage of that building, if it would be compatible. For people that we feel that we could use, that could use in there. I know somebody throughout the senior center. Well, I don't think it's compatible for a senior center and I have. Had only one brief discussion with Mr. Carson. He says, I don't want to even talk about it until somebody comes from the council and asks. Or the city and asked me if we would take a look at it. So. I, I don't think that seniors could fit into that space. It's not big enough for what they need and it's not designed the way they need it. With smaller rooms for some of their activities and other spaces there. The use of that, of that large room could be used. I know at times the library is very full. And they're in the use of their space and it's hard to you get that building. Sometimes that may be an option that we have. But once again, it's going to take somebody to monitor that and it's not like the library has as a staff member to take care of that. Who's going to do that, even if we do that in the evening or, or an afternoon activity there? So there's a lot of these things that I need answers on before I will even consider it. And the, the last thing is, is that I certainly hope that we engage the public on this as well. So I think that they should be notified that we are considering this. We ought to have time for public input. We even may should have. And in Jamie's philosophy of open communication of opportunity, maybe they have a public meeting so that they can. Throw their two cents in as well. But I'm, I'm not completely closed on this. I know that other bill I didn't, sorry, I didn't mention that, but the other building that's. That's there, you know, the use of it was, is kind of limited now without. Stairs up to the second floor of that, the outbuilding there. It could be used for DPW if that's decided to be that way to store some things and we certainly need it since we lost some stuff up there. At Avalon when we made that decision to take care of that, those two, they did eliminate those two other storage places there. So. There is some potential there. I, I'm going to be open minded to it. But I'm like Zach, I think that we ought to tie it into the, the total. Needs for this city and this should not, because this came up, it should not be a priority over the fire hall. And we can put them both on the same ballot and let the city residents decide. To make that decision on both of those issues. And so I would ask for a six month. Period of time for due diligence rather than three months. I think I'm done for right now.
Julie, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would. Thank you. But being a person of few words, I'm just going to say that I am definitely in favor of. Exploring this more and pursuing it. And I do want to address the elevator issue. We definitely would have to put an elevator in. We are. An entity that serves the public and we have to have an elevator for the public. So, but I'm definitely in favor of exploring it more. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, is there, does anybody else want to say anything more in open session? You know, there's, there was, there's a lot of topics there. And again, I, I don't think that. We need to fool ourselves into trying to solve them all today. I think that the goal. Our, I think that our goal should be to want to take the next step, which would be to. Make some type of offer on the property conditioned upon. You know, a due diligence period and the purpose of putting the. Sample purchase agreement in the packet was so that you could get a feel for what that looks like. I believe our. Our city attorney Scott Manzella is still with us. Is he down here somewhere? Yep, he's still there. So if we, if someone would make a motion to go into closed session or to move the closed session up on the agenda so that we can go into the closed session. I think that would be the appropriate thing. I think, Justin, you can list everybody that you want in there in addition to council. But we would need to read, essentially read the statement at the bottom there. Which should have been above adjournment, by the way.
Yeah, that, that's, that's my fault. Sorry about that.
I didn't, I didn't catch that. I would have changed that, but move, move item P up. I think it's appropriate to do that. And then we can talk about some things in closed session. We would then come back out of closed session. Right in front of item L seven. Which, you know, we, we wouldn't be doing if we didn't make an offer. So it's sort of logical to take the closed session first, I think. Zach, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I prefer to keep the closed session. Well, before adjournment for members of the public so that they can continue to participate instead of having to refresh and figure out when we are coming back.
Yeah, no, we, we would come back out and then have council comments and not arranged and everything before adjournment.
Well, and I think we ought to do those things before we go into closed session. So people can, who are curious and want to stay can do that. Instead of having to figure out, are they going to wait five minutes or twenty minutes or an hour and a half?
Oh, I see what you're saying. You want to give them the benefit of speaking ahead of time. Okay. Well, that's, that's, we can make that choice if you want.
I prefer that too. I think we had to go ahead and finish our agenda and then go through our council comments, not arranged. And then the adjournment and then the close session that were as, as, as published on the.
Okay, just, 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 well, then let me just, let me just make sure that the, the public is aware of one other fact. We don't make. Decisions in closed session. We can discuss things in closed session. But we will have to come back out before we adjourn. And if there's any direction that we have to give to staff or the attorney or wherever it would be. Those motions come outside of the closed session.
Correct.
Or clear, I, I'm only clarifying that because back at the beginning of the agenda, well, almost four hours ago, Cole asked a question about. You know, how does that work if we are going to the closed session? So. Okay, so am I hearing then we want, are we gonna? There's no sense in, in doing item L seven though, right? I mean, that doesn't make sense until after. You're presupposing that, all right, so you're supposing we're gonna, okay.
I think it's part of a due diligence to find out what those, what his numbers are.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. I would, I would, yeah, you would only do that though, if, if, if there was going to, if you were sure there were going to be enough people that. We're going to vote to, to put a purchase offer on, which we haven't done yet.
Correct.
So that's why I'm saying that the, the, the closed session action to the, the decision to have a purchased agreement. Needs to be made before we should hire partners in architecture. In my opinion, if you, if you try, if you're trusting that, you know, we can do it, it seems out of order of all.
Well, if it turns out it costs a million dollars to put it in elevator and put in sprinklers. That would affect whether or not we want to put a purchase order in. So if we do.
Zach, Zach, you're, you're, no, you're missing my point. I, I agree, we need to, I agree, I'm going to support the proposal for partners in architecture. But in order to get, in order to get the property. Under our control for ninety days or whatever number it is. We're going to need to agree tonight. To put a purchase agreement together. And that, and that purchase agreement will then be offered to them for a period of ninety days, of which I'm sure they'll give us. Then that would, that would create the time for David to do his evaluation, for us to ask all these energy questions, for us to get the. Maintenance costs or whatever. But the purchase agreements is what creates the time. That makes sense to everybody?
Well, I, I'm not sure yet, Sean, on that. If, if, if we voted, if we voted. In the session to purchase it, then David's motion would go into effect, correct?
If, if we've, if we go into closed session. And discuss that we want to make a purchase offer.
Correct.
Conditioned on ninety days and whatever other conditions we want to put on it. We would come out of the closed session and we would instruct. Our city manager and city attorney. Just to prepare the purchase agreement and submit it on behalf of the city. Consistent with what, with the terms that we discussed in closed session. That, that keeps the purchase price. Of the offer, you know, out of the public, which we have the right to do. Now, in this case, there's no hidden, a lot of times when you go into closed session, you're, you're, nobody, nobody knows which property you're talking about. In this case, we're, we're a hundred percent transparent about which one we're talking about. Okay, but assuming, assuming we come out of closed session with the direction to enter into a purchase agreement, it would then be logical to hire partners in architecture. Now, you, you can, you can hire partners in architecture without the purchase offer. You just run the risk of somebody else being able to put in a purchase. Offer to secure the property that you're trying to pursue.
How long has it been on the market right now?
Justin, Justin, do you know the answer to that?
Uh, I want to say it's been just a couple of months.
We, we know that at least four people have looked at it.
Yep, thanks. Couldn't we make it so that we can, I mean, to keep things if people want to, you know, move on to seven? What is this, L seven? That it's, you know, conditional on, you know, say everybody likes what is happening in L seven. And they say, yeah, we want to do that and conditional on. You know, of whatever majority vote to enter into a purchase agreement. Could we do it that way where?
You can, if you, if you want to do that, you can.
Yeah. So I would be in favor of that if that keeps things moving and the public involved, but us all still making sense consistently.
Julie?
Yes, I'm definitely in favor of. Facility number seven. If we decide to make an offer, absolutely. I mean, we first, I'm in favor of making an offer so we can pursue number seven.
Okay, thank you. So it's just a matter of how, what order do you want to take it, I guess?
Right, right.
My, my thought, my thought is that, that, is that the. Is that the citizens might want to be able to comment after they hear what we do in closed session, but. If, if you're, if you're thinking that they all want to go to sleep, I can certainly understand that.
Well, it's only ten o'clock or eight minutes till, so.
Okay, well, I, I don't have the benefit of being able to, to make a motion. My suggestion is that we go into closed session. And, and talk about, I don't, I think after all the talk we've made, I don't think it'll take that long to, to be in there.
I'll make that motion, Mike.
Okay, so you're moving that we move the closed session up on the agenda to go into closed session for the, the, to discuss the potential purchase of property. In accordance with MCL fifteen six or two sixty eight, section eight.
Yes.
Okay, so motion by Knight. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is that why?
Mm hmm, yep.
Thank you, why? Okay. Justin, after, after Ms. Jones. Justin, after, after Ms. Jones calls the vote to go in. Explain to everybody who's still listening what's going to happen. You're going to put them in a separate room?
I'm going to put them into the waiting room, yeah.
Into a virtual rate waiting room, right?
Correct. And then when the closed session is over, I'll pull them all back in.
Right, and then we will be, we will be essentially in front of item L seven at that time.
Correct.
Okay, everybody understand where we're going? Ms. Jones, please call the vote to go into closed session at 9:54?
Yes, Knight?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Griffin?
No.
Cousins?
No.
Kyo?
Yes. So what's that, three?
Three, three. Okay, doesn't pass.
All right, so we're not going into closed session. So help me, where does somebody want to go now?
I guess the next item is. Item seven. Maybe it makes a motion. If they don't make a motion, then we go to council.
All right, we're on item L seven then.
I move to approve the proposal from partners and architect for valuation and conceptual design of 3515 Broad Street for city offices and an amount not to exceed $77,800. Is included, starting page 192 of the packet.
Okay, motion by Michelle's?
I'll second, Knight.
By Knight, thank you. Any discussion? That you made the motion, any discussion?
Yeah, just, I'm gonna, a couple of people have said this, that. I don't want this building, if we don't have an elevator to get folks to the, the upper level of the 100 unit. I know our staff can walk it up and down the stairs, but we're open to all of the public and imagine if there's a school tour of the offices and the one kid in the wheelchair can't go up there, that is, that is not good. I don't want to support that. So. It ought to have to include an elevator somewhere for that section of the building. Some other things for. A potential consideration is that the, the 200 room for council chambers. Will probably need more attention on how folks get into it from the outside. Either they're walking straight through the offices or they've got a long walk on that. Deck area, so we may have to, and I didn't see it in here specifically, consider how folks get up and into that. One other thing I'll throw out there, but this would only be if there is extra money available, is. Potential for how could the outbuilding, the first floor of the outbuilding. Be reused for council chambers. And I say that because the space is about right. It would need definitely a bunch of work. But it would allow for separation of, of that function from the rest of the office function, so they wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to worry about folks wandering around. And with that, I'll be quiet.
Wow.
Um, I guess I just want to say I don't really understand why we're talking about the elevator. Like, somebody said we didn't want an elevator. I don't think any of us. Has implied or said that during this entire discussion, and I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, thanks. I was going to say the same thing. I mean, I think the whole idea of. Of this would be, of this whole item is to figure out where to, where, what it would take to add one and what the options would be for adding it. I don't think anybody suggested we shouldn't have one.
No, I mean, I think we all sort of, that was our. Like, when we were all together talking about this, that's the first thing all of us said was, we have to put in an elevator.
Yeah, good point. Okay, are there any other questions? I'm not seeing any hands. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the proposal from partners in architecture.
Okay, Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Okay, we have concluded our new business. We're down to item M, council comments this evening, starting with Mr. Cousins.
Well, I want to let you know that. A tragedy has happened in our, in our family. I've talked to Sean about it and I will let you know, too, that the time that I may be able to. Give you for some of these workshops and things like that may be limited. Saturday night, my wife had a major. Issue. And she's hospitalized now, now, and. It's, it's life threatening and we are dealing with that as a family right now. My son from Minnesota is flying down tonight. And so we're there. It's a surprise and it was a shock. I want to give a lot of. Props to the fire department of being here immediately. We call 911 and then also for the. The other. Groups at ambulance services that took her to the hospital and. I don't need sympathy, I need your prayers. And so keep me in thought when you do that, okay? If you're so inclined, if not. Just wave a hand up to the sky and say, help Pat. I didn't think it was inappropriate to say it here. We're kind of family. We have to make decisions together and we have to make decisions for this. We've always had an issue of. Of. Sympathy. Whether somebody dies, whether it's a staff, father or a mother or what. And I think we will continue to do that in this council. I don't see anybody that wouldn't be willing to consider that, those types of things. So. Just keep this in your mind. For the next, next. Months. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. It's been a hard four hours staring at you. Knowing what I, what you told me this morning. Zach, you ready to go next?
Yep, I just want to let folks know that I was late today with, when I took employment, I told them that I had to be available starting at seven, which is what our rules say, but. Had an event that I had to attend today that ran into that. I did let. Manager Brier and Mayor Kyo know about that. On a lighter side. My wife's cousin visited from Russia a year and a half, two years ago. And as we were driving through the streets of Ann Arbor, he actually commented that they were worse than Grozny after the war with Russia. So, there you go.
Okay, Julie?
Ah, yes, thank you. Yes, Paul, I will definitely remember Pat and my prayers and thoughts and we hope for the best for the whole family, so. And secondly, I just want to say, we've got to find a way to make these meetings somewhat shorter. I have a hard time making it through the evening. Thanks.
Thanks, Julie. Jamie?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay, wow.
I'm all set, thanks.
Bella?
Oh, yeah, muted. Sorry, I accidentally muted myself again. Um, yeah, I don't really have anything to say. I'm really sorry that happened to your wife, Mr. Cousins. I know that's like a really stressful situation. I hope she gets better.
Thank you, Bella.
Well said. Alex?
I have no comments, but Mr. Cousins, I will keep you and your wife and your family in my thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much, Alex.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, I think I covered everybody. We are down to not arranged participation. Is there anyone on the? Zoom meeting or watching here, listening that would like to speak this evening? I'm not seeing any hands. Are you, Justin?
So far. Marie's waving her hand and Abby.
Abby, okay. We'll start with Abby and then we'll go to Marie.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, fantastic. I just wanted to, you know, it sounds like we're, we're looking at a lot of. Opportunities for the, you know, building needs of our community. And, you know, I just wanted to remind the. Old in, in duration, not necessarily in age. Council members and the ones that may not have been around the last time I spoke about the needs of the performing arts in Dexter. Of, you know, kind of where, where we currently sit. I, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Abby Briggs. I'm the president of Dexter Community Players and. A current member of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. The current, the performing arts in Dexter are. Without a place to perform right now. For years and years and years, all of our community. Performing arts organizations have utilized school space. With the sale of Copeland. That to a private, to encore a private organization that leaves one space within the city of Dexter. Which is the Center for the Performing Arts, which is at the high school. The sale of Copeland also has put additional pressure on the use of that space. Leaving essentially the school summer break as the only time available on the calendar for the use of any. Non-Dexter Community School Organization to utilize that space. So, you know, we have four main community performing arts organizations. Dexter, I'm sorry, Dexter Community Orchestra, Dexter Community Band, Dexter Community Players and the newly formed Dexter Community Choir. Are essentially without a place to perform nine months out of the year. So, you know, the 2020 seasons for these organizations were pretty much canceled due to COVID. But now going forward, you know, looking at a resumption of life post-COVID, that need has not gone away. So I think I, I did speak to the session, I don't know, pre-COVID, I don't know when that was, it was probably in 2019 at some point in time. But I just wanted to kind of, as, as I'm seeing on the city council agendas, talking about space, talking about the needs of the city. That those needs are still in existence. So I hear, I hear words like too much space and, and utilizing it with community organizations. We are here, we would love to, you know, see what there is and. And work with the city council to hopefully meet the needs of the whole community, you know, and the arts that make our community such a wonderful place to be. That's all I had to say. And Paul, I'm praying for you, bud.
Thanks, Abby. Abby, can you just give us a quick address?
Sorry, okay, sorry, I was, I muted and then unmuted. An address for. Oh, yes, 99077 Sundance Trail.
Thank you. Thank you for making the comments, Abby. Marie, I think you were had waving your hand also.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Paul that, that he and Pat and his family are my thoughts.
Thanks, Marie. Justin, do you see any other hands up?
I do not.
Then I would like to ask that we, somebody make a motion to move the closed session ahead of adjournment, so we can potentially go into it if we want to.
So moved.
Move by Zach?
Yep.
Thank you.
Knight.
Second by Knight, thank you both.
With all the staff members being present in closed session.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to go into closed session at 10:08.
Okay. Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Okay, we are in closed session. I'll give Justin a second to, can you let people out of the? Waiting room, please? And let me know when you let everybody out.
Everyone has rejoined.
Okay, so everybody has rejoined the main meeting. Counsel has come out of closed session. We're back in open session. Is there a council member that wishes to make a motion following the closed session?
Uh, yes, I, this is Wath Hubbard. I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the city manager and the city attorney to proceed with the offer as discussed in closed session.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Second, Michelle's.
Second by Michelle's, thank you both. Any discussion needed? Okay, it's no secret. That we were talking about 3515 Broad and. Ms. Jones, if you'll call the vote, please.
Yes, Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. That concludes the business on the agenda this evening, except for a motion for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Support by Paul.
Thank you, second by Paul. Thanks, Paul. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
The meeting is over. Paul, hang in there, buddy.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Keep us posted, okay?
I will. There's not much you can do, but thanks for offering. Anyway, we'll figure it all out here.